I would like to call to order the May 2, 2022, Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome, everyone. First up is the approval of our work session agenda, and you all have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented, or are there changes to be made? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to discussion items. First up, item 3.1 is Fire Districts requesting a tax increase as part of their fiscal year 2023 budget request. And I think Roche is going to start us off in that discussion.
He's on.
He's up there. Okay.
As part of the Fire Districts fiscal year 2023 budget requests, three of our volunteer fire districts have requested an increase to their tax rates. Fire Marshal Jacob Thompson, along with representatives from each of their fire districts, are here today to provide the board additional information on their FY23 budget requests and the requested tax increase. I will let Fire Marshal Jacob Thompson provide you additional details and introduce the members of each of the departments.
So we'll go one by one, is what I'm assuming. The first department on the agenda is Allen Fire Department. Allen Fire is requesting a cent and a half tax increase that would take them from their current seven and a half cent to nine cent per $100 evaluation. This will provide an increase of $99,154.32 additional revenue each year over their current seven and a half cent rate. Chief Math Petal is here to provide some additional information related to the increase and answer any questions.
Ladies and gentlemen of the commissioners, thank you for allowing me to be here today. As Jacob said, we are asking for an increase. This does not come easy from us. It comes as some very spirited discussions and from our board of directors, as well as myself, how to get the best service for the folks that live in our area with the funds that we have. So we actually are going to change just a little bit from what you guys have in the budget. And we signed this budget on April the 11th, and it was submitted to you guys. April the 19th, we were at a regular meeting, and if you folks know Jim Avitt, he lives in our fire district, and they experienced a house fire back in November 26 of last year. Mr. Avitt stopped by on the 19th, and he was talking to us as a group. He'd just come by to say thank you and talk to the guys that were there at the day of his house fire. Mr. Avitt said something there that stuck out to myself and a few of the board members that were there that night. Mr. Avitt spoke about our quick response, and he felt that 10 seconds made all the difference in the world. He said another 10 seconds, he would have lost his home completely. So what it was, was a garage fire, and the garage fire with the wind blowing the way it was that day was blowing into the home. So our guys got there, made an amazing stop on it, and saved the entire living area of the home, minus the kitchen and the living room. So all their personal items were saved that were in their bedrooms. A lot of their personal heirloom, family heirloom items were all saved because of the quick response that we had that day. We were, from the time we were dispatched on scene, we were at Mr. Avitt's home in four minutes and 30 seconds with a full crew of five guys on a fire truck, ready to go to work when they got there. So with that being said, we are going to change the budget just a little bit from what you guys have, and we are going to try to modify it to put more towards our staffing. We have had two occasions in the past week where we've not had anybody at our station to drive the fire truck. We are struggling, just like every other volunteer fire department. We do have part-time staffing. We have three people a day, 24 hours a day, when we can get them. We've put out ads for part-time employees on social media and associated websites in the last eight months, four times, I'm sorry, in the last eight months, and we've received three responses. One was absolutely not qualified in any of the things that we put on it. The second, we actually called him this past week, offered him a job. He accepted, called back two hours later, and said he no longer wanted the job. So in eight months, we haven't gained any new part-time members that are qualified to do the job. So we are currently doing this with 19 paid personnel, with our three people 24 hours a day, and those are all part-time guys. The same, there are departments in the county doing the same staffing that have 40 and 50 guys on their rosters, and they're having trouble filling those seats as well. So despite the low staffing numbers, we strive to maintain three personnel, as I said. We do meet it probably 80 to 85% of the time. The other 15%, we operate with only one or two personnel, and like I said, in the past week, we've not had any that were eligible to drive the truck. Now, we did have four calls the first day, and every single call got answered by volunteers. Now, they didn't take a fire truck, but they did respond, and they handled the calls appropriately and took care of whatever needed to be handled. So the calls are getting answered. It's just not to the level of satisfaction that we strive to provide our members that live in our district. So with that being said, we are struggling to find new qualified people to come and work for us, and volunteers as well. So we are going to try to change to full-time drivers. We are going to try to hire three guys full-time, and at the nine cent rate, we can do this. It would allow us enough money to be able to do this. We would hire three guys, and they would work 24-hour schedules, just like a normal firefighter does, 24 on, 48 off, which would allow one designated driver for every day. And then we would also, we would have those two other positions would still be maintained by part-time personnel to supplement the full-time guys as they take days off and have sick days and that sort of thing. That'll all be supplemented by the part-time personnel. So, you know, this is a hybrid format that we're looking at. We're not the only department in the county. I know the town of Midland is starting to do the same thing, because they've been having issues trying to get personnel hired down there as well. So we continue to have a strong volunteer base that runs calls. Like I said, we've not had any calls go unanswered. We have somebody respond to every single call, and there are, you know, there are departments that can't say that, but we hold ourselves to a higher standard at Allen, and we plan to do the best for every single citizen that's passing through or lives within our district. So at nine cents, we'll be able to make this happen, and creating these positions without the tax increase would not allow us to do this. So we would have to try to maintain what we're doing with our part-time personnel. And if we go at the nine cent tax rate, it's going to leave us no room for the building addition that's in there and the radio contract that I had provided in the original request. So we will be committing 457,000 of our budget to staffing, and that's 457,000 out of 685. We have been just budgeting 360,000 for our staffing, so as you can see, it's quite a significant impact on our operating budget to go to this. But we feel it's going to be what's best for our property owners and our citizens that are passing through our fire district. So I would also, there are a few things that I would like to ask you guys to just be in consideration of. On top of our staffing is the staffing grant for Cabarrus County. In 2006, the county was very proactive in addressing the decline in volunteering with the start of the county staffing grant. If you're not familiar, every fire department gets $30,000 from the county to pay for one person from 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday. And I commend the commissioners for this huge step forward in the fire service when it was started. Unfortunately, since 2006, nothing has changed with the grant amount. For 16 years, we've not seen an increase for this line item. When considering the rise in population within our district, that directly correlates to increased call volume, we current staffing, I'm sorry, excuse me, while our, we currently run 900 to 1,000 calls per year. And while our budget has increased since 2006, it's not proportionate to the increased number of calls that we are running. Allen receives 606 calls for service in 2009, and just last year, 2021, we responded to 987. That's an increase in emergency calls of 62.9%. Addressing the 40 hours per work week, initially, the staffing grant was established to cover stations during the regular business hours when volunteers were at work. At Allen FD, the high call volume occurs, and it's outside that window of the regular 40 hours scheduled work week as well. So I would like to ask the county to raise that to $60,000 per department, and that would allow two people at each station per day at a rate of 15 an hour, or one person up to $22 an hour for 24 hours a day. Any excess could be used to outfit firefighters. At the cost to equip one firefighter is now over $4,200 per firefighter. And then the only other item I have is the radio contract. That was in the prior budget. That $48,339 is our yearly payment to maintain the radios that we currently have. The radios we have now are 2012 models, and we got those in 2012 when the entire county went to this model of radio. Excuse me. So unfortunately, we don't have any control over the radios. We don't have any say in what channel goes in them. We don't have any say in how the radios are laid out operationally. We literally just have to pay the bill. So if we don't have any control on this stuff, we just pay the bill to use these radios, I feel it could be something that the county could pick up. The county is currently paying this for Cabarrus CMS and Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office. They're already upgraded to the newer models, and they're on the county contract, which this is what our portion would be. So from what I've been told by the salesman, as of 2023, the current models we have will no longer be serviced for damages. So if it breaks, they will no longer repair it. As of the 2025-2026 budget year, they are changing the format of the radio system, and our radios will no longer work on the radio system. So we have to have something in place prior to that budget year so that we can stay operational. These radios are an absolute necessity for us to operate. How, it's how we alerted for calls. We transmit any further resources that we need. We speak with helicopters to other agencies on multi-company incidents. In most cases, these radios are our only lifeline on an emergency scene if something goes wrong. The radio contract is a necessary item that would significantly benefit the volunteer department if funded by the county. And like I said, it's already, the county is already funding the sheriff's office and Cabarrus CMS. It would greatly relieve some strain off the volunteer fire departments. Other counties such as Rowan and Union County, both are already doing this for their volunteer fire departments, and I think it would be great if Cabarrus County fell in suit with that. That's all I got.
Okay, commissioners, questions?
I just got a few comments. I appreciate you being here.
Yes, sir.
But if we did what you're asking us to do for all the fire departments?
Yes, sir.
That would be about a million bucks.
Yeah.
It'd be about a million bucks, seriously, you know, for all the fire departments. And I don't think your request is out of ordinary, you know, as far as the one and a half percent increase. I know with the extra cost of fuel and then switching it around from doing the construction, which you can use your fund balance for that.
Yeah.
If you needed to, you could use your fund balance for that.
Yeah, and we do have a fund balance on hand, and the reason it does look quite large right now is because the next three to four months, the way the county does our taxes, we'll only receive about $15,000 a month, which is not enough to pay our billing cycles, because they give us our tax money as it is taken in.
Right.
So that's why we have to maintain that to be able to function the next couple of months.
And that's how we have to do as well.
Yes, sir.
Because tax payments don't always come in at the same time. They come in all during the year.
Yes, sir.
So I understand that. But as far as the other request, doubling the staffing grant, I don't know how well we can do on that, but I've talked to the county manager and talked with the chairman as well, and I think we are going to address that. To what degree, I don't know.
I understand.
But I'm hoping that we can do something, though, because, you know, it's hard to get volunteers today, and even at $15 an hour, they, you know, go to work hard, they're flipping hamburgers for that.
You're exactly right.
And these guys are putting their lives at stake every time they go out and fight a fire, a car incident, or any of that stuff, and so we need to do everything we can to try to help them. But then again, the bucket only has a certain bottom in it.
Yes, sir.
And we don't want to get under the bucket. We want to try to stay in the bucket if we can.
I understand.
So I appreciate you coming, and I have no problem with the one and a half cent myself. And of course, we won't vote on this until, I guess it'll be in our general meeting this month, I guess. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions, commissioners, or comments?
Yeah, and I'll echo Commissioner Shu. Thank you for being here, and I'll say this to you, and I'll, the Gold Hill and Flo Store too, you know, and I've said this before, I'm in awe of you guys that run toward danger when the rest of us, including me, are running the other way. So thank you for what you do when you guys get up, because you don't know what time or any minute a call is going to come that's going to put your life in danger. So thank you very much for that. I guess I'm slightly, I guess I'm a little confused, because I see the narrative that we have.
Yes, sir.
But you said something was changing, but as you were talking, it sounded like, and I guess I just want to make sure I'm following, that you were going, the full-time drivers and the staff, that's not in our narrative, and the reason I'm asking is it sounded to me like you were probably going heavy on personnel, which might put you in a bind equipment-wise, next year, the year after that, or somewhere. I just didn't want it to get out of whack, and I wanted to make sure I was following you correctly.
Yeah, so to address what I was talking about, the difference is, if you, or can look at our budget if you have that. So we have 25,000 in capital outlay for the building, and we have 48,339 in capital outlay for equipment. That's for the radio contract. Those two items are going to be moved to the personnel and staffing. So we will not be able to do our building addition, and we will not be able to do the county radio contract as of right now.
Okay.
Because we're going to reallocate those funds towards the personnel and staff.
So, and not to make you repeat yourself, but so the radios that are going to then go out of service in the next year, couple of years, that's something you're going to, you're pushing off to address next year?
So we're going to, we're going to try to find another solution for that between now and then. We're going to look for grants, and we're going to look for other opportunities to be able to fund that.
Okay.
Not telling you we're going to receive those, but that is our intention, is we do have a little bit of time to work on that, and that is our intention, is to work on other sources of funding for that.
Okay, great. And just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I did a calculation. That $30,000 in 2006 would be $42,783 today in inflation-adjusted dollars. So 60 grand, that's a pretty big jump in an ask.
Yeah.
As far as where you've been. Now, knowing that you've been 30 for that long, you've been going backwards every year, right?
Correct.
Because inflation eats it up. But just to true up the two numbers, that's what it is.
So, and I apologize if I'm asking you to repeat, but you're, what, and it's not anything unique to you, we're all experiencing it. As far as the challenges, you know, hiring people, and they call you back an hour later and change their mind and that sort of thing, and I think it's pretty common knowledge to everyone that that is happening. So what's your strategy? You're talking about shifting some funding around so you can devote more funding. Do you think that the hourly rate, are you thinking of adjusting that? Do you think that might be a solution, or just what are your thoughts on how you're going to deal with that labor shortage issue?
So in our current funding right now, we pay our guys 12 bucks an hour to work part-time. And the updated funding, we will have the one full-time guy, and then we have to also updating the two other positions to 15 per hour to try to catch up. Like he said, you can still make that flipping burgers, but there's only so much in the bucket.
Right.
And we have to be able to maintain to pay our bills and pay fuel and insurance and all that. So we simply can't go up any higher than that.
Right. So it'd be a combination of adding some additional positions plus increasing the pay for existing positions.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay.
And that is our plan with the funding.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, we thank you for that presentation.
All right, next is the Gold Hill Fire Department. They're requesting an increase of one cent that would take them from eight cent to a tax rate of nine cent per $100 valuation. This will provide an increase of $5,346.98 over the current eight cent tax rate. Chief Matt Brock and Treasurer Olivia Livinggood are here this evening to provide some additional information.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thanks for letting me talk today. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I'm Chief Brock, Gold Hill Fire Department. Have 42 members, volunteer members. I got three paid staff people. We have, we run two calls a day, run several calls last night. I average about 20 people per call, volunteer-wise. The problem I have is during the day, when everybody's at work, I'm trying to get where, and a lot of these fire departments will tell you, when you run a engine company, you got to have three people, be sufficient, man driving, two people fighting fire. Right now, I've got two. I can work a day, and that's kind of where I'm at with it. I got, I got to get that third person. Some of my older guys that's retiring out, they helped me a lot during the day to help the paid staff. They just can't do it no more. With that being said, all those younger guys, it's around in the afternoons and then weekends and stuff, we're all at work. So I want to take my money, and I want to stick it towards the paid staff, and I'm buying a new engine. It should be here sometime in October. I do, I run Rowan and Cabarrus. I'm half and half. I run a good bit of calls in Cabarrus, just like I do in Rowan. I run some of my worship calls, and actually in Cabarrus, we had an overdose the other day of a two-year-old and a three-year-old on a, yeah, on Gold Hill Road. So with that being said, I run just as many rough calls as I do in Cabarrus, I do Rowan. So I am a Cabarrus County Fire Department, just like I am at Rowan. I only get $15,000 of the grant staff money that they're talking about, because I don't think, at one time, they considered me being a Cabarrus County department. But my last structure fire was in Cabarrus County on St. Stevens Church Road. We got there pretty quick. It was in the attic, got it put out, saved, saved a lot of the house, put out tarps, saved a lot of the valuables in the house. So that's, that's where I'm at. I just, I got to have more paid staff, just for the, to help me during the day. And like I said, the truck is coming. Our district's growing. There's a lot of houses being built in our district. The truck that we had, it was our first-out engine, wasn't equipped to take water on all four sides, and needed a bigger pump size, and so that's the reason why I had to buy a new fire truck. And I got a lot of commercial structures in my district, too. One of the biggest commercial structures is Vulcan, and it's in Cabarrus County. We had a man get run over by a rock truck over there not too long ago, and we had the airlifting. So that's why that pumper's going to serve Cabarrus County, just like it will Rowan, so serves both sides of the county line. So, but I had to, I was asking for an increase for both counties. So that's why I'm here today to talk about needing the one cent. One cent's only going to give me about 20-something thou, $24,000, I think, but that's for both counties. That's not, it's just one county. I think right now, I only collect 42,000. That's counting $15,000 I only get for the grant that y'all give, the 30,000. I only get 15, so that's 15,000 added that 42,000. So I only collect about 30, no, I collect right around 20-something thousand, just in tax dollars, and then the 15,000 staffing grant. But what I do is the two paid people that I work a day, one gets paid, comes out my budget money from Rowan County, and one comes out my budget money from Cabarrus County, and both him running Rowan and Cabarrus. So the man that I pay for in Rowan County, without Rowan County tax dollars, he runs in Cabarrus County and fights fire in Cabarrus County, just like the man in Cabarrus County runs into Rowan and fights fire. So it's done equally across the board. I don't, I don't tell one of them, hey, y'all stay on this side of the county line, because this county pays for you. That's not how it works. So they both run in both counties. But I sink more of my money, Rowan County money, to fight fire in Cabarrus County, run calls in Cabarrus County. So, and I'm, right now, I'm at, when I first become chief three years ago, I was only running 200 calls. I'm running 400, over 400 now. So I can tell you, I run 41 this month, 41 calls of service this month, and I can stretch you thin on manpower. But like I said, I'm doing really good. We're really young, and we're going to be around for a long time. So I got 33 certified firefighters out of 42, and I got 20 medical people. So, and everybody right now is averaged age about 25 and 26, and I'm going to tell you how I've done it. It's a junior program. I have six juniors. They come out of high school, Mount Pleasant High School, and they come over there. We teach them what it's all about. They stick with us. They go to the firefighter rookie school and become firefighters. Half my, half my volleys right now are 18, 19-years-old, and they come from Mount Pleasant High School. They live inside my Cabarrus County district. So we're doing pretty good. Rowan County, I'm the only fire department in Rowan County left that does a junior program. They're 14-year-olds. You get them, you get them that young, make them in what you want to, but you got to get them out, you got game systems. They like to play with the game systems. If you can get them out of that, you can get one that wants to get out of the game system, get their mind on what we do, you let them get involved, and you can get them. And so far, I'm doing really good. So I just struggle during the day when everybody's at work. That's the problem. So between that and buying this new truck, like I said, that's why I'm asking for a once-in-increase.
Just a quick question. Is this, are you asking the same from the Rowan County side as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Same, plenty, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate your efforts, you know, working with those high schoolers.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure it's difficult, and hopefully changing their focus will make a better person out of them as well.
That's, that's right.
And make community service, and helps keep your fire department afloat. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
So you mentioned the staffing grant that you're getting 15. How does that work in Rowan County? They do comparable staffing grants?
No, Rowan County don't. So Rowan County don't do a staffing grant, period. So basically, they make you pay out of the budgets that you get to, if you want to pay for paid staff. But like what Chief from Allen said, Rowan County does other things for us. They have a quarter-cent sales tax, and that's what pays for all our radio stuff. We're about to get all new radios, brand-new radios. So I get, I get Rowan County to put the Cabarrus County side into it for me, so I can talk in Cabarrus County and be adequate to Cabarrus County. So they save me a lot of money when they do that.
Right.
So the radio that we carry today, and like Allen Chief was trying to say, their radios cost anywhere from $6,000 to $8,000. So if you imagine if you had 30 in your department, I don't have to pay a dime. They, that's what they do. So they save me a ton of money doing stuff like that. So I guess that's, I guess that's the reason, kind of why they don't give us like a staffing grant, because they pay for other things in different areas. So they make us use our tax-based money to pay for staffing if we want it. But there's a lot of departments in Rowan County that don't have staffing, period. It's really, really, you know, struggling. It's everywhere. It's all over, it's all over the United States, so.
And so I guess this could be a question for Mike, or Rodney, or Roche, but what do we do sales tax-wise with the volunteer fire departments in Cabarrus County? I know there's some piece of it.
Yeah, Cabarrus County, they do get a portion, they do get a portion of the sales tax, all of them do.
Yeah, yeah, we do get a portion, yeah, sales tax. Like the staffing grant that they're talking about, that they, that, you know, they're talking about up and, you know, trying to get 40, $60,000. Right now, all the departments in Cabarrus County get 30,000, we get 15.
Right. And I guess I was trying to kind of get an idea in my head as to how we compare, and so we give a staffing grant, Rowan does not. Rowan pays for the radios, but so our sales tax money is unrestricted? It just goes into the budget?
Yeah, it's based off of the total valuation and the percentage of that fire district as part of that valuation. Whatever percentage of that total valuation that fire department makes up of is the portion of that sales tax.
Right.
Yeah.
So, if we decided to do the same thing as Rowan County and apply the sales tax money to the radios, then that would hurt the budget in other areas.
This, this tax that they do, it's like a separate tax, it's what they call a quarter cent, so it's not a whole cent, it's a quarter cent sales tax. And it, it revenues about four million dollars a year, and what they do is when it builds up.
Countywide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, when it builds up and gets so high, they go all around all the chiefs and departments and say, all right, five years from now we're gonna update radios. And that's what they do, so anytime we break one, it gets burned up in a fire, somebody loses one, that chief gets a brand-new radio, no charge. And it gets all reprogrammed, all put back in the system, gets re-ID and handed back to that chief, no charge. So, I guess it's a good situation for me because, like I said, I spend, some of my Cabarrus County tax dollars goes to Rowan, helping fight fires in Rowan and my district in Rowan. But, my Rowan County radios come into Cabarrus County so I can fight fire in Cabarrus County.
Right.
So, it works out good, so, to that aspect of it. So, it's equal, it's pretty equal across the board on how we do things.
Right.
Because we're just out there on that one little far corner out there, it's, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, the.
Staffing grants fifteen, sales taxes nine thousand six twenty-six.
Yeah.
And then their, their, that the lower miss.
Right.
Forty-two seven seventy-six.
The question.
Just got a comment in general, you're talking about the quarter cent sales tax that Rowan County gets, and they get like four million for that. I don't know that Cabarrus County would wanna do this, but we still have the availability of adding an additional quarter cent to our sales tax. We haven't done that in years past simply because according to the legislature, it has to be dedicated toward transportation. And we didn't really feel like we wanted to do that for transportation, and it would generate somewhere nine to ten million dollars, maybe a little bit more than that. But, it might be something that we could consider, Mike, in the future, to look at that quarter cent. Because the fire department issue is probably gonna progress as time goes on anyway because of the lack of volunteers and then the constant things that's going on in the fire departments. And it might be that we could possibly request, and this don't happen overnight, by the way. It takes a lot of time to get a percentage of a tax increase across the board. But, it might be though that we could look at that and then amongst other things, that nine or ten million could be used, it could possibly be used for the fire departments as well. To meet those type needs like radios or whatever, staffing or whatever, because that's the need that's gonna be ongoing, and I don't see that diminishing anytime in the near future. And so, you know, and that's just a suggestion, you know, that you guys could be thinking about and just throw something out there.
Just, just to update on that, of course, as you guys know, the current, the current quarter cent sales tax that's available, it's gotta, it's gotta be voted on or a local referendum. And typically, or currently, transportation isn't the only thing you can use it for. And as you know, this, your board, this board has been advocating for many years to use some of those funds for school construction. So, and we've not been able to convince the state legislature to allow us that flexibility. So, to ask for fire, I don't think it won't hurt to ask, but we may run into the same dead end, so. But, if we can move it to, you know, the request be flexibility of all our needs, that'd be wonderful, then you guys can make the decision how you wanna allocate it out and it could be different every year, whatever.
Right, that, it would, it would be of a big help. And then another good thing is, you know, that's why it's ever so important to have workable representatives who is in Rowan to help us on a local level. And, you know, all of that's coming up here real soon. And so, we get good people in place to help us accomplish what our goals are locally. And I think that we should at least make the request and then.
Sure, yeah, I think you've been working really hard to try to get school construction because transportation wasn't a hot issue and now it's been so long that transportation is now a very hot issue as well. So, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of requests that we can just get that flexibility, so.
And so, not to be negative at all, but so far, you could ask for this, or you could ask for this, or you could ask, you could make up any reason you wanted to, and the answer so far has been no. The General Assembly will not grant us permission to have a referendum. So, that's, that's the unfortunate reality so far. Don't, won't give up hope that that might not change.
Well, we just keep trying, you know.
Yeah.
It's not like throwing mud against the wall hoping someone will stick, you know, you just have to just keep after them, you know.
Right.
And, and as our needs increase, then that's all the more reason for us to keep putting pressure on those guys to work with us. It's just like the LGC with the thirty-year versus twenty-year financing, you just have to stay after them till you get what you want.
Right.
So.
Well, we're persistent, if.
If I'm not mistaken, that's a NCACC priority as well, so we're not going over county, is that?
Um.
Am I remembering that correctly?
I know we've had that discussion before, I'm not sure where it stands right now.
They're getting ready to start their annual, or biannual goals process here coming up, so. I'm sure, I'm sure some of those that have been in place for the last couple of years are gonna start changing just because of the needs.
But, I can tell you I'll give back to the community, like I went and got my ISO, August the third, we went to a class four. It's a really good rating, it's gonna save all the business that we have in our district a lot of money. I've already had some people call and tell me thank you for what I've done, they saying it saved them a bunch of money.
Oh, they're insureds.
Yeah, going from a six to a four, that's, that's a lot. So, we saved them a lot of money, so I just need to ask them for a little bit back. You know, they try to keep up the good stuff that we do, so. You know, like I said, if you look at our numbers, we're not asking for a lot, it's only gonna give us like over twenty thousand dollars, that's all it's gonna give us.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioners? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
And finally this evening, class Fire Department requesting for an increase is Flowstore Fire Department. Flowstore is requesting a seven cent increase to take them from seven cent to fourteen cent per hundred dollars valuation. This will provide an increase of a hundred and ninety-two thousand twenty-three dollars and forty-four cent over the current seven cent rate. This is, of course, secondary to the fire district boundary changes. Chief Houston and President McElroy, if you would like to come up and speak, you're more invited to, I'll get out of your way, but they're here to answer any questions you may have.
Good afternoon, like Jacob was saying, we're, it's not something we were wanting to ask for or we're planning to ask for, but we're asking for an increase from seven cents to fourteen cents directly related to the district boundary changes which were approved back in March. As a result of those changes, our, the value of our fire district went down fifty-eight percent. But, the call volume related to that area only went down thirty-two percent, so we're still having to, we're still having to run calls, we're still having to provide a service. And our, our current tax rate of seven cents with the district changes for next year, our budget went down to two hundred and sixty-five thousand and change. Our staffing line item for this year, we currently staff two people twenty-four-seven through part-time people. So, our current staffing line item which includes payroll, payroll taxes, payroll fees, is more than the two hundred and sixty-five thousand as a budget for next year. So, that doesn't account for any, anything else, trucks, fuel, station, utilities or anything. So, obviously something has to be cut or we have to do an increase. So, the areas that are going to other fire districts, their tax rates are going up to either ten cents or fifteen cents. So, everybody's gonna be, is gonna be seeing an increase, you know, basically to keep the same services that we have in place. As a taxpayer, I'm not happy about paying more taxes, but as a resident, you know, I, I wanna make sure that my family's protected. You know, the district changes were made to provide for the closest unit response. I myself wanna make sure that my closest unit is responding and is staffed as well, so. This, we've, we've cuts, you know, things that are not necessary or areas that we could cut, obviously a lot of things we can't cut. But, the increase from seven cents to fourteen cents will allow us to keep basically providing the service that we're providing and keep staffing the way we're staffing. That's pretty much it in the nutshell, wish I had something more and exciting for you, but that's, that's all I have for you on that, so.
Okay, Commissioners, questions or comments?
Chief, what's your plans for disposal, or y'all gonna keep the property that you bought?
No, if we're planning to sell it, we're waiting on a couple of things to be done before we put it on the market, but it should go pretty quick, seeing how the market is, you know, around here.
Do you expect to get a substantial gain on that, or what are you, what are you looking for?
We hope so, we hope so, I don't wanna speak on any numbers, but, you know, we'll definitely get what we put into it, you know, hopefully get some more. So, that, that part in itself would be a win, and we've cut all the expenses related to that, you know, as far as the second station and anything with that, we've cut that out of our budget. So, this, our budget that the fourteen cents is basically, it's a service out of our current station and also continue staffing with the two people twenty-four-seven.
Well, let me ask you one more question, and that would be if you didn't have the option to come into us to get a tax increase on the citizens in your district. What would you be doing to make it work for Flowstore?
Well, first thing we'd have to cut staffing, we couldn't even, currently we staff two people twenty-four-seven. I don't know that we'd be able to, the numbers we're running, I don't think we'd be able to run one person twenty-four-seven. So, obviously part of the day would be uncovered, you rely on volunteers to come from home, slows down your response times. You know, we still have a, you know, dedicated group of people, but if they're not in the station, obviously it takes them longer to get there, so, and that's why we went to the staff.
That increase to fourteen cents, how many additional staff is that, or is that just a raise in the staff salary, current staff salary to retain?
That's just to maintain at current level. There's no, no increases in staffing, no increases in anything, basically just ones of the people we have now, at the pay rate we have now.
Okay, other questions?
Comment, and maybe there's a question in there somewhere, but obviously that's a pretty big, pretty big jump. You, you mentioned the call volume, you had a percentage that it, and it was, I think I followed you, you, the budget's down fifty-five percent, but the call volume's only down thirty-two percent?
Yeah, so our, so our total district value as our current district went down fifty-eight percent. We acquired a little bit of area from Allen and a little bit from Georgieville, so our, our budget was basically, ended up being cut by fifty-five percent. So, we gained a little bit of revenue from that, but not a lot. The thirty-two percent of calls that were cut are basically from our current area. So, that doesn't include the calls that will be taken over from Allen's area and George's area. So, realistically, you're looking at, you know, probably twenty-five percent, I don't have the numbers on what we would pick up in those areas.
Okay, so.
The reduction of twenty-five percent in total call volume? Okay.
That's just a guess, I mean, like I said, I don't have the numbers on the calls for the areas that we're taking in, so.
Well, it just, I mean, I'm, I'm, obviously, it still has time to shake out, I mean, you, you know, right, you're gonna have to see, you don't know you're projecting, which is all you can do, your crystal ball's probably no better than anybody else's. So, it just, on the surface seems for that change, a double in the rate seems, seems pretty high. But, I can certainly understand from where you're sitting that you're driven by response time. I mean, I would, I would think that's about the biggest marker that you've got to go by to make sure that you're doing what you're supposed to be doing for the people that are depending on you. You know, it's just, it's, it's tough for us, we're taxpayers too, just like you said, and, and we certainly understand that, we're sensitive to that. So, I just wanted to make sure I was kinda following exactly where, what, what your thought process was there.
Yeah, it is a lot, like I said, the areas of our district that are going to other, other districts, their rates going up to either ten cents or fifteen cents for whatever respective district they're going to. It's not just us, you know, it's going up, so.
Equipment, fuel, I mean, we've heard that in the previous two, you know, it's, and it's not unique to your industry, I mean, it's everywhere.
Okay, other questions or comments? And of course, this will be part of the budget process that we'll have to determine when that will be presented at our meeting in, well, actually the budget will be presented this month. So, we've, we've got some decisions to make. We appreciate you gentlemen coming and presenting to us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob, did you have anything else before we move on? All right, thank you. Okay, we move now to human resources, public safety market study, and we'll have, delighted to have Lundie Covington start us out on that one. We wanna go back to that one. We're gonna come back to that one. Okay, we're gonna skip over that one for a moment. So, we will go to behavioral health facility provider requests for proposals, and Rodney will lead that discussion.
Good afternoon, I'm gonna ask Marcelle if you don't mind coming up. Marcelle Bean will join us for the conversation, and Lawrence is gonna pull up a slide deck for me. That would help. And so, we've talked about this a few times, the behavioral health facility over off of Kannapolis Parkway, and so the, the first few slides are just a reminder and a refresher, and then we'll talk a little bit about the next steps in the process. And so, as this facility will be structured, there's basically two separate components. So, on the left side, you see sort of the county-owned portion, which would be the behavioral health urgent care, the adult-based facility crisis, and then some outpatient services. And then on the right side, which is required because of federal rules around Medicaid reimbursements, the second facility has to have a separate owner that will be determined by the county. And that will be the child and adolescent facility-based crisis facility. And so, you can see here some descriptions of what those services look like. So, the behavioral health urgent care would be a twenty-four-hour walk-in, separate adult and child waiting areas, this would serve ages four. And this would be basically twenty-three hours, a chair to get them sort of stabilized and then determine the next steps in that process. The adult facility-based crisis would be inpatient, and there would be sixteen beds for that, and those are typically up to ten to fourteen-day stays. And then there would also be outpatient services, so group therapy, medication management, et cetera. And then again, the third-party owned facility would be child and adolescent, and so that would be sixteen beds aimed at that age group, of six to seventeen-year-olds, and again, up to fourteen days in terms of a stay. And this is just a refresher, we were out there at the milestone facility, it is the orange shaded area, it's about four and a half acres that these facilities would be placed on. Reminder on the funding side, so on the program design and construction, we received the state grant of thirty million dollars. About a year ago, you set aside about three point one million dollars of our Medicaid to hold harmless sales tax money. And so, we have a total construction budget of about thirty-three point one million dollars for this project. And then there will also be facility operations costs, and so obviously we'll have Medicaid and other insurance revenues that will reduce the cost, but we will have county contributions that will be, need to be made, and then the providers for the facilities hopefully will contribute to this effort. So, on April first, we posted a request for qualifications, this is for the programming and schematic design for both of these facilities. And so, although we can't own the child and adolescent facility, we need to make sure that these will all fit on that four and a half acre site. And so, this RFQ closed on Friday, and we received eleven proposals. And so, we'll start going through those, I was very aggressive on this, Kyle, it's a selection by the end of May, that's probably more like June or July. So, we'll hopefully have a design for. firm selected to help with that programming and design for these facilities. And so what we're talking about today is the next step, which is, we need a provider. And the most important is the provider for the county-owned facility. So again, behavioral health urgent care, the adult facility-based crisis, and then those outpatient services. And so the RFP that is in your packet is to seek a provider to operate that county-owned facility. And this will allow us to integrate them into the design process upfront. And so it's critical that they be at the table with this design firm to design it to their needs from an operational aspect. And so hopefully, in June or July, we can be selecting a provider for this facility through this RFP.
Rodney, a question real quick on that. Do you have a model that they'll be going by somewhere else that they'll be trying to fashion ours by?
The Guilford County is the most recent example, and so they operate a facility just like this. And so we've learned a lot of lessons. We've done a site tour, and so it's informing all of the work we're doing.
Is that where the Commissioner was from that we talked to when we were in DC?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And so the plan for this is to post the RFP tomorrow. It'll be open about a month, and then we'll see what proposals we get and go through an evaluation process to select that provider. And then the third-party facility owner, this is a little bit more complicated, is the first decision point is who that owner will be. And so in Guilford County, that owner is their LME MCO, which for us would be partners, but there are other options available to us. And then we would have an MOU with that provider or owner that would basically at that point shift the responsibility for the child and adolescent facility completely to them, and they would have to take it from there. The only thing we can provide is the reimbursement for the construction cost. But they need to select the provider for the facility. They need to manage the construction of the facility to make sure we don't run afoul of the federal Medicaid requirements. I believe that is the last slide, so I know that was a quick overview, and we can answer any questions. But again, we wanted you to be aware that we are making progress. We're trying to move this along quickly, given the significant contribution from the state, so that they know we're trying to move as quickly as possible to get this facility open, hopefully in 2024, 2025.
Okay, questions?
Just going to ask, so the one where you visited at Guilford County, you have two different owners, but obviously, the county kind of got everything started. How did the relationship, I mean, obviously, I guess it's totally separate, but how does the relationship work in Guilford County with whoever ended up managing their second one, or owning their second one?
I can talk a little bit about it. So Sand Hills, like Rodney said, is their MCO, LME, and they were the ones that paid for the construction of the adolescent facility, where the county paid for the construction of the adult facility. So they worked in tandem from the beginning. Jim Albright, their EMS director and the county commissioner at the time, who was a former EMS director, were the ones that really looked at the orchestration of this collaboration and partnership. One of the things that they made sure to do, and I think it may be in one of the documents as well, but is to hire someone to help with this coordination, because it's really important that for the behavioral health urgent care, where pediatric comes in, that they get referred over if they're appropriate to go directly over the street. So they have at the county level a behavioral health kind of director who kind of works between the partners to make sure that everyone stays on the same page in that. So I think, you know, their big thing was having a person that was a centralized point of contact, but also making sure that as they were working on this, that they use the same architectural company, I think, construction company, so that everything looks almost the exact same.
And who funded the joint person?
The county. She is a county staff person. She previously worked for the hospital system there, Cone Health, but she is now a county-funded physician.
I'm going to assume everybody, everybody has the same goal, so hopefully, the relationships and the running would go very smoothly.
Yeah, they spoke very highly about their ability to work together and that they meet, I think, monthly as a group. They have like a leadership team that meets from Cone Health, who's the operator of the adult facility, the county, and then Sand Hills, their person, and then Alexander Youth Network is the service provider at the youth facility. So they meet monthly to kind of check on things and make sure that everyone's referring when they should.
Thank you.
We, if you're interested, we may can take another small group up to tour as well. They were very gracious with their time and showing us the facility, so.
Well, and the experience that we've had with the folks in Guilford County, I think, has been invaluable. We went up for an initial visit with them pre-COVID. I guess it was late 2019, and they were in the planning process at that time. So we had an opportunity to talk with them, with their LME MCO, about the process that they were involved in, the steps that they were taking. And so then we had an opportunity to go back and visit with them a second time, once the facilities were actually open, and benefit from some of the things that they've learned there. And I know there were a couple things that they said, if we were to do it over, we would do this differently. So hopefully, that will be very helpful to us. But I think an important part to remember on this is there are some, and of course, obviously, everybody knows this is an opinion, but I would say ridiculous federal guidelines that we're required to abide by. And some of those are specifically in regards to Medicaid reimbursements, and the fact that there can only be 16 beds in this facility, 16 in this facility. They have to have two different owners. They have to have two different addresses. They can't face the same road. Just really arbitrary kind of things that, that they've done a very skillful job in Guilford County of, of taking a single piece of property and arranging those buildings one facing this way, so it hasn't a different address than the other one. They required them to, to put a driveway between the two buildings so that they had two separate parking lots. They, a lot of really ludicrous hoops that you have to jump through, but, but I think it's been very beneficial to us to be able to experience that. And one of the thing, you know, we've talked about this for a long time, and certainly, I think it's extremely important, and we've talked about the impact to law enforcement and to our EMS folks, you know, when they get these calls, the options that are available to them. And in many cases, and I use as an example, your 16-year-old child that has a mental health crisis, and, and it becomes unmanageable for the parents, they have to call for help, law enforcement or EMS goes out, and I'm glad we have them here with us, and I encourage them to correct me if I say anything wrong. But many times, they, they only have two options for, for this person that's experiencing this problem, and that's to take them to the emergency room or to take them to the county jail. Those are the two things that are available. If they, if they take them to the emergency room, there are specific requirements that a law enforcement personnel has to stay there with them. And we have, Marcelle, what's the longest, or I don't want to overexaggerate, but the stay in the emergency room?
I mean, so the average is 42 hours, but that's an average of people who are there an hour to people that are there, I think, like up to a month, and sometimes kids are there longer because of lack of ability to have them placed in a, in a better facility.
Yeah, so, so I mean, literally, and that's what I was going to say, a month in the emergency room. And so I think that we're addressing this on multiple levels. Part of the American Rescue Plan money that we allocated to Atrium was to provide for some additional emergency room beds for behavioral health issues. I wanted to just mention, you know, our world has changed a great deal in, in the last couple of years, and this is our National Association of Counties, most recent county news, and, and they're talking about, and they have bright ideas, is what they call this column in there, but they say, "problem. Children of this generation face more than any before, leading to high rate of anxiety, mental health problems, and suicide with little access to healthcare." And the solution that they've come up with in Santa Clara, California, is to create wraparound services to support children and teens before they encounter a crisis. And so this is talking about, and I'm happy to share this with you, Marcelle, and anybody else, but it's talking about a facility that they, they have included there where, where young people can come in to hopefully prevent them from getting into that crisis situation. You know, I think that all of us probably have, have looked at, there was an article in yesterday's paper about several young athletes that, who have ended their lives in suicide. You know, hopefully, some of these, having these wraparound services would, would eliminate reaching that, that point. And so, so I hope that's something we'll consider when we're looking at the overall scope of what we're trying to create there and offer, and, and include that as part of it. And I think these outpatient services are very much what, what they're talking about here. But I think we have the, we've been incredibly fortunate to get the level of support financially that we have gotten so far on this facility. So I think we're going to have an opportunity to really make a positive impact on, on our community in, in ways that we've not been able to do in the past. So, you know, I think the topic we're talking about is this request for proposals, and I think that's definitely the right way to go. But hopefully, we will include a comprehensive approach to some of these issues and, and make sure we're covering all those bases.
Just saying, conclusion, I know we talked about this for a long time, and the needs have been great for a long time, and to see us be here and begin to see things take shape, take shape is a great thing, I think, for our community, and sooner the better. So thank y'all for keeping it moving, and I look forward to see it come to fruition.
Agreed. And, and speaking for Marcelle and the Health Alliance, they have been very close allies with us throughout this entire process. So, you know, I sometimes feel like we overuse the collaboration word, but other times, I think that we can't overuse that, and that, that has been a really important part. Our mental health task force has been very, very engaged and involved in, in looking at these issues. So we've, we have some really positive things going on in Cabarrus County that, that I think a lot, a lot of other folks are taking a look at. So any other questions?
I was going to make one more. So in the RFP, one thing I wanted to point out is it also will help us from a financial perspective to understand what this relationship will look like. And so one of the provisions in there asks the providers to tell us what they are capable and willing to fund themselves, and then what they will want the county to help fund. And so this will give us a sense from those potential providers, whether it's Atrium Health, or Novant, or any other provider in the community, what they are willing to put their money into. So that'll be helpful for us from a financial perspective.
And we hope that, that what we're proposing to do is going to be a big asset for our local hospital system, because that's going to take, that's going to free up those emergency room beds and, and hopefully be a big advantage to them as well. So I think everybody benefits. Any other questions on that item? Okay, very well. We will move now to item.
Person is here now? There she is.
That's, okay, so we're going to go back to item 3.1. No, item 3.2. Let's talk about public safety market study. And is Lundie with us?
She is.
There's Lundie. Yeah, I keep looking at the screen and back here as well. Welcome.
Thank you. You have one of us in person and one remote, but we're going to make it work as a tag team. So the subject we have before you this afternoon is a public safety study that Becky Droz with Catapult has conducted for us, and she is with us virtually to walk us through her, her process and her materials. So Lauren, you're going to lead us through the PowerPoint, please, and we'll turn it over to Becky.
All right, thank you, Lundie. Good afternoon. As Lundie said, I'm Becky Droz, and I am with Catapult. Some of you may remember the Employers Association. Catapult went through a merger last year, and so we are now Catapult instead of the Employers Association. This year, we studied several different departments. We studied emergency management, emergency, excuse me, emergency medical services, the sheriff, as well as the animal shelter. What I did when conducting the study was I looked at the job descriptions. I'm going to pause for a second. I hear a little echo. Can my sound okay?
You're good on this end.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so what I did with the study is I looked at the job descriptions for 36 different positions within those different departments. But those job titles represented 547 different positions across the county. So when I review those job descriptions, I then go out and I look at several different data sources. I used three different sources. The first one is the Catapult North Carolina Wage and Salary Survey. Then I use Economic Research Institute, or ERI, and Comp Analyst. So with those three sources, I'm looking to find job descriptions that are comparable to the job descriptions that you have in the county. We also conducted a special sponsored study where we reached out to several different municipalities, and I'll share in just a moment the organizations that provided data on their positions to include in the study. When I look at the data, I look at a variety of different scope points. So we're looking predominantly, or we're looking at the Charlotte metro region, so that's the Charlotte, Gastonia, Rock Hill Concord areas. And I also look at government and not-for-profit, as well as all industries. So it's a mix of data, so that we're thinking about where do you attract employees from, and where do you lose employees to? That's what I look at with that scope. And so when we bring in that data, what I'm doing is trying to get a good idea of what's going on in the market. The data points that I use are the 50th percentile or the median. I prefer that to an average or a weighted average, just because it's not skewed by any outliers. So I look at that median data. I look at the three outside sources, as well as the sponsored study, and then I pull those together. All of the surveys get equal weight. I do a simple average, and that's what creates the market average, or the going rate for the jobs that are studied. Here you can see the different participants. So all of these different municipalities, cities, counties, provided information about the jobs that were included in this study. So that information, again, was included, is part of that market average, part of that going rate for these positions. So based on the data, when we look at that market data, we want to align the market with the structure midpoint. So the structure that you have is geared towards being competitive, not to overpay, not to underpay. And because of that, when we looked at that market data, I would recommend that the grade assignments change for 13 different jobs. So there are 13 different jobs in the county that I think need to be regraded so that they are more competitive with the market in order to be able to attract and retain the employees that you need. For those employees that are in job classifications that I would recommend an adjustment for, I would suggest a 5% per grade increase. So if an individual moves one grade, then it's that 5% increase, so that that individual retains their position in the structure. However, they're, they're moving up based on the grade. So their range placement would stay consistent, but they would still get that increase and recognize that that job has changed based on that market data. There are 266 positions that have individuals that would receive an increase, and the cost for that is approximately $670,000. So recommendations. One, I would continue each year to take a look at your, your data. Make sure that from an internal equity standpoint, everything looks good. I know that's something that the HR team, you know, has done, so I would just continue to do that. I would also continue the cycle of reviewing your salaries against the market and splitting it up, doing a third each year, and then reserving a year for any special projects is best practice to make sure that you're staying on top of the market. I would also say that if you have positions where you're really struggling, you're having a lot of trouble retaining people, or having a hard time filling open positions, then those are ones that I would say we need to go off-cycle and we need to look at sooner. are ones that I would say we need to go off-cycle and we need to look at sooner. One of the things that I've noticed in the market is that I've seen several different cities and counties who are really kind of throwing some teasers out there to really attract people into EMS work, as well as police work in some situations, where we're seeing not only increases in base pay, but we're seeing different counties that are offering sign-on bonuses or different shift differential, particularly for those EMS jobs. So that's when the, at this moment, since we just did the study and we just looked at it, I have confidence in the data as it is today. However, I think it's important that we keep an eye on the market. I don't want Cabarrus County to get lost or lose people if we continue to see that area really heat up and get more competitive for talent. And then the last thing that I would recommend is, of course, continue to look at your structure each year, look for any movement that we need to make, look for changes in the cost of labor, so that we make sure that the structure is still working for you and that the salaries are still working to attract and retain the people. Are there any questions about the methodology or about those recommendations?
And we do have a detailed spreadsheet, if you'd like to see that. This was kind of the high level, but Lauren has access to an Excel spreadsheet that will show you the positions that will actually move. The bulk of them for this study were actually in the sheriff's office. We do have one in emergency management, two in emergency management fire services area, and one in EMS as well. But the bulk of the positions with movement would be in the sheriff's office. But as Becky said, we are definitely seeing some movement with EMS. There's a lot of activity right now. I don't think it timed out to really play into this particular study, but we would like to kind of keep our finger on that pulse to make sure we stay competitive there.
Lundie, could you talk just a little bit about these salary studies and the timing, how we're trying to do that countywide?
Yep. So as Becky mentioned in her recommendations, we've gone to a structure where we review salaries now. It's every four years for each job family. So this is the job family that includes all of our public safety positions. We have another tier of physicians we'll look at next year, then DHS group being the third tier, and then we'll go back into looking at our internal practices and review again. So we're just now coming back into a study. Last year, we looked at compression or internal equity and did some adjustments in that vein. So it's been four years, I believe, since we've had a look at the public safety group. So, you know, that's a long time, especially right now. I know you mentioned the challenges with recruitment. We've heard that already from our volunteer squad. So it is tough to stay on top of this, but we really feel like this is an important practice to be as competitive as we can. The benchmarks that you saw are some that we've selected, top tier in North Carolina in addition to local employers. But again, if we put a pause on doing this type of work, we really do fear we will be left behind, so it's important to address. So it is a lot of money, but if we can retain employees in these areas, that also is a huge cost savings, because the effort of going out and recruiting, training, outfitting them with gear, all of these departments require a lot of training and a lot of equipment. So being able to retain is definitely a competitive advantage for us.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's just that, Lundie, on the jurisdictions that we select for geographical around us, also the size, but then also, who are we competing with? You know, typically, you know, sometimes you say, well, we don't need to, we don't need to measure Charlotte, they're so big. Well, that's where we're competing, and we're constantly, sheriff's going back and forth, he's getting some of from over there, they're getting some of ours. And the same thing with paramedics. And so it's a challenge for us, so we've tried to broaden out. We used to just stick to those counties that had the same population with us as we were growing up, but we're no, we are experiencing now that really, we're not only competing with them, we're competing with those larger jurisdictions, because they are hungry to come get some of our people, so that's why.
So Lauren, I would like to get the spreadsheet, when you have time. It doesn't have to be now, if you're just emailing or whatever.
It's in the...
Oh, it's in?
Pack in.
Yeah, right before the slides.
Got it. Okay. I didn't get to look through this that good because of the little glitch. I didn't get to do like what I normally would. But I would, I know that Sheriff Shaw and Chief Deputy Bailey are both here. Are you still doing well with your hiring and your full and things are a little bit better than they were?
Come on up and brag.
Yeah, brag some. If that's the case, come on up, stay awhile.
It's a two-part story. We're doing really well on recruitment as far as the sworn side, the law enforcement side, but you know, in our agency, there's a huge number of employees that work in the detention center, and we're challenged in that area. And we're not alone. Every agency that operates a detention center is challenged with getting those employees hired. So while our numbers are not terrible by any stretch, we're well under what others are facing. It's still a concern when you start to see it emerge, when six months ago, you were running just a handful of positions that were vacant. You know, people, lives change, they fall in love, they relocate, they do a lot of things. You know, we've seen an uptick over the last six months of vacancies in the detention center. So while on one hand, we're doing a great job of recruiting, you know, that's a competitive marketplace in every detention center in North Carolina, because we're talking about 100 of them are out recruiting, you know, as well to get folks in there, so.
And do you see that typically to be cyclical?
We've been looking at it, I mean, over the past three and a half years, we've definitely made some great strides to recruit people in, get them in, get them hired, and fill those positions. But it is a concern, we're starting to see a little bit of a shift to where we have more open positions in the detention facility. And I can tell you, over on the law enforcement side, we're virtually full, other than some anticipated positions that are coming. So that's wonderful. You know, a lot of agencies are struggling with that as well. We have many in the pipeline right now, or several for the detention center, so we're hopeful. But I'm not quite sure there's a cycle there, but we're watching it as it goes through.
Thank you.
Lundie, could you expand a little on the continued annual review of internal compensation equity, just to make sure we're...
So the recommendation there is that we look at our groups, we, again, kind of split it out. Back years ago, we used to review all of our positions every two years. And if there were any findings, that was a pretty big budget hit to move all of those positions in that one-year cycle. So we switched to a schedule where we rotate through our position groups, and the goal would be to kind of look at them in smaller segments and to put focused attention on each of those areas. So that would be the game plan, to continue looking at it in roughly third equivalents of our employees. But if we see positions that we're starting to really struggle and the marketplace is heating up, we still would like that opportunity to go in and do a deeper dive. So for example, even though there wasn't a recommendation right now for EMS, if we see that in this next year, we really are losing some ground there and need to focus on that, we would also bring that forward with the next group that we're going to study. The next group is kind of our general government group, so it's basically our departments other than public safety and human services that we'll be looking at next.
And I think that was the point that I was wanting to make, is that we're not restricted to this timing cycle, that we have the ability to make adjustment as needed. If the sheriff is experiencing issues in a particular area, and I just use that as an example because he's right in front of me, we have the ability to address that.
Definitely. That's in the personnel ordinance, that the commissioners have the flexibility to do that. So we appreciate that you allow us that, and it's definitely beneficial, because again, hiring and retaining people is a savings, and it's public safety in particular, you know, we know how vital that is to the community, so we really want to stay ahead of that and not get into a situation where we're losing people over pay issues.
Right. Which seems to be the topic of the day. I think we're probably going to talk about it a little bit more in a minute.
So just one other quick comment for you, so you can tell the public that's watching, so that it's not true that, as has been alleged, that our safety personnel only get raises every three years when we do the salary study.
So there are several components of our salary structure. We do annual evaluations, and all of our employees are eligible for a merit pay increase. It's based on their job performance, it's tied to their performance evaluation. If there is a COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment, that the board agrees to, they would participate in that. If there's any promotional activity, and we do have ladders now in that area where an employee can move from a basic level to a senior or a master level, based on their skill set. So that's attaining additional certifications, additional experience, so there are ways for them to grow above and beyond this, but this is one of the tools that we utilize to make sure the ranges are competitive with the market. And Becky might can elaborate on that further, but again, each of those practices have a different goal and a comprehensive comp program, but that would not be true, that it's just that one opportunity. That's one of the options we have.
Any other questions for Becky or for Lundie? Becky, thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you. I had hoped to be there in person. I apologize for being virtual, but thank you for allowing me to participate virtually today.
Well, we're glad you were able to do that, but I will tell you, it is better in person.
I agree. I agree.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just real quick, Mr. Chairman, so in terms of next steps, unless directed otherwise, this would be part of the manager's recommended budget, these recommendations.
The current year budget number, this is less than the current year budget that we budgeted for this?
The, it is slightly more than the current year budget number, but we have it built into the next budget year.
Right. Okay. Great. Okay, we move now to item 3.4, from Infrastructure and Asset Management Courthouse Expansion Project Update. And we're happy to have Kyle Billifor with us for that item.
Good evening. I wanted to take this opportunity to provide an update, not just on the construction project, but also the public art component, as well as the repairs on the historic courthouse clock tower, since it's been a while since we updated on that, and I was able to get in touch with the gentleman that's heading that up and to provide some input. Could you share the pictures? Thank you. So in terms of construction, major milestones that we've just accomplished are the HVAC systems for the new courthouse, it all been set up, so that's allowing us to cool and then control the humidity inside the building, which obviously drives your interior envelope in terms of putting in all our finishes and our, especially our millwork. We started a tactile concrete exterior panel, so those are ultra-high-performance panels that are on the exterior of the building, as well as the Parklex paneling, and that is what looks like the wood. So you can see that if you're traveling on Corbin in between the courthouse and the jail annex, you can see on that side, they started that wood finish installation on the exterior. We also started the above-ceiling inspections on the fourth floor, and also converted over the 1975 courthouse to the new transformer, so that's why we were having so much structural issues over the past several weeks. It's only been a disturbance to the staff in the building for two or three days, but for our staff, it was a two-week process, so all weekends and all nights. So that conversion has taken place, and with the above-ceiling inspections on the fourth floor, just so that the board understands, the way the interior is being built is we're building out high to low. So starting on the fourth floor and building out all the interiors, and then bringing it down to the levels. So obviously, the first floor would be last. And in the next few weeks, I'll send you some potential dates for the Board of Commissioners walkthrough. I've been waiting till we have the fourth floor finishes done, so that when I walk you into courtroom, it doesn't look like insulation and beams, but actually looks like a courtroom. So we've been holding off on that. So once we have something on the fourth floor done, I'll schedule that with you. In terms of the upcoming months, we're going to complete the remainder of the exterior glass. The tower crane will be removed. We'll continue with the exterior facade. In fact, we have to go back and do some teardown of some of the brick that's there and put it back up, just due to some quality issues that we weren't satisfied with, so that'll be going, a little bit of be coming down and going back up on one of the elevations. We'll start prepping former Means Avenue or the Public Plaza, we'll start prepping that for the actual hardscape or the pavers that go on there. And then we'll begin the millwork on the fourth floor, hopefully by the late May. So that's, it kind of gives you a gauge of when I would bring you all through, is more looking at the June and July time to bring you through and see that finished. Any questions about the construction progress? Okay, we can jump over to public art. There are no pictures for that. Just an update, we are working with the selected artist and their engineer and their actual fabricator, and then all of our engineers and our construction manager at risk to figure out the structure in terms of how you hang that. So it looks great in pictures when everybody sees, but trying to make that structurally with loading hang above there and be installed properly and have all the weighted limits is a little bit challenging. So we actually have another meeting tomorrow. We've already had three different structural design meetings. So that has proved to be, we've probably put in excess of 30 hours in already, and because a lot of different modeling goes into that to make sure there's no conflicts with what's above that ceiling in terms of fire protection, HVAC, electrical, and things like that. So we'll keep the board updated as that process goes through. Any questions about the public art component? Okay. In terms of the historic courthouse tower, it has been a while since either myself or Michael Miller was up here to present to you, but we did reach out, I thought it was a good time to get an update. So here are my updates that I received from the Cabarrus Time Savers. Currently, they're investigating a dry ice blasting. A lot of the parts that they found, the very small parts that are, have a lot of grease and sludge on them to not be able to chip the paint away, you would use a dry ice blasting to try to dissolve all that gludge off of it, so that you could reuse those pieces. So they're looking into that. They've identified all the pieces that we couldn't find up in the tower, and they'll be replicating those using a 3D printer, and then they basically take that piece down to a caster to actually see if it can be made out of the original metal material. The winders are being fabricated by a contractor out in Ohio, so they don't have those fabricated yet, but once they do, they'll provide pictures to us, and they're going out for donations for all of this processes that they're going through now, so I wanted to make sure that I discuss that. If anybody has any interest in that, can be reached at the Cabarrus Time Savers, can Google them and find them. Any questions?
Well, I will say that I'm very impressed with the appearance of the courthouse, particularly that cantilevered room that we're looking at now. I think on two different occasions, as I sat in front of the sheriff's office at the traffic light, examining the wood panels and so forth, the vehicles behind me honked their horns because I stayed too long, but I did encounter one of the contractors over the last week or so, and he asked why we hadn't been over, and I told him Kyle would not allow us on the premises. So I'm happy to hear that you're, that you're reaching a point where we might be able to do that.
I'm considering it.
Yes. And I've heard very positive comments from the public about the public art presentation as well, so.
So just since you're pointing that out, that's actually where the jury sits. That's our, that's our largest courtroom. So all the courtrooms are physically the same size, but that one has the highest ceiling, so it has the appearance of being the largest. So that's kind of your granddaddy of your superior court, if you will, and that's where the jury sits. So essentially, they are, they are on the edge, sitting on the edge. That's actually one of the jokes that the architect used as we were walking it. So I want that, that went on to their design, so that's where the jury will sit, right there.
Very good. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We move now to item 3.5, our innovation report, and we're happy to have Todd Shanley for that one.
Kasha Thompson is going to join me, and we're going to tag-team this, and I'm doing something that I swear to you that I would not do. We're going to do a live demo of our website, so that's how, that's how confident I am in the work that the team has put together. I know that we joked about that in the past, that that's not usually something I like to do. Landon does a good job of creating those videos for us, and just, and as a note, Landon Patterson has taken another role with another group, and today was his last day, so we wish him luck in what he was doing, and we thank him for all he's done for us. While I'm thanking people, I want to thank Kasha and her team, and Joe Battinelli, and Marcy Jones... Marcy Jones for all of the work they took to get this website done in six months. It takes a lot of effort to get that shepherded across the line. Obviously, there were tons of people throughout the county who have worked on this. The goal, we had two goals for this website. It was to increase findability and put the website back in the hands of the departments. The importance of putting it back in the hands of the departments, it puts more data that's relevant for the community back into the website. A lot of that was going to social media, and the data on the website was getting stale and stagnant and just wasn't relevant as it should have been. So we're very excited about this new platform. You know, it looks very similar to the old site, so it's not something that we were looking to redesign. If you remember five years ago, Kasha went through the painstaking process of rebranding the county, so we did not want to change that, and we used those same colors and the same aspects to do that. But some of the things that I wanted to point out to you guys today was this top section. So you see the words services, community and public safety, and activity and recreation, and then we drop down to property, building, and just, I'm sorry, I'm reading it off there, and I shouldn't, development, these glasses aren't as strong as they should be, and then connect with CABCO, and then government. These titles came out of an extensive process called information architecture. Some people call it a card sort, some call it a tree sort. We spent a lot of time with the community, doing some surveys and developing some, using some tools to identify words that weren't just so government-oriented. So we work in this business every day, so we all recognize what our services are and how easy it is to find something, you know, because we know where it should be because of the, and so you'll, those of us, we'd know how to do that, we would use the government tab. But if you're looking for a service that you need to find quickly, that is often used, so animal services, employment opportunities, IMAY lookup is one that, you know, surprisingly is a very high-used thing on our website. GIS is obviously the number-one item that is used on our website still today, and so those are the type of things that we've put here under services to make sure that they're easily found and quickly accessible without, I guess, overcomplicating the topic or trying to make sure that, well, GIS works in IT, so we look for Todd Shanley and then go find that and make that overly complicated for the public. But if you know that, you can still access it here, go to departments, go to IT, and find GIS under that. So that is one of the things that we're proud of, that we've kind of maybe broken some of the government language out of the website and made it something that people can use and find. The other area that I think is very interesting is this new feature of the improved search. So I'm going to type in sample ballot. Well, I'm going to type in sample to begin with, because I saw our friends from Co-op here behind me a second ago, and I thought it was interesting as I was typing it, that the soil water conservation and some other things for rentals and testing tools from soil and water and those type of items kind of show up for if you're going to take land samples or dirt samples. So that's a link that's here on our website, but it's called a predictive search. So with this predictive search, we're able to, you don't have to go through and go to another search page. You're still here, you take a second, and then you can click this link to get to where you're going. So, you know, we're trying to shorten the number of clicks to find the items that you're looking for. Again, there's a lot of things that are still in development with this website. One of the items that we are working on is a, this is a great picture of Frankless Park, and that we're going to be able to add some data about the images that we have here on the site to be able to know where these pictures are, so they're not just random photos throughout the county. So Mr. Harris brought that to our attention. That was a great ad for us, so we're working on that as we speak. And again, so this is the, back to, if you remember the old website, and I have it here pulled up, so in case you don't remember, it's been a long month for us, so I've had to go check back a couple of times and remember, where was that? So we had these service centers previously, so we've tweaked these service centers. There was a lot of boxes and a lot of scrolling, and we heard the word scroll fatigue a lot with the other website. A lot of people, every time I look for something, I have to scroll up and down your site over and over again to find it. So again, increasing findability, I know that Kasha's cringing every time I say it because it's probably not really a word, but IT people make up their own words all the time. So again, GIS is a top item that people go to on our website. Clarus with the tax system, the library catalog. This is a tricky one, because we made the decision to go directly, because the library catalog itself is the item that people are going to, we go directly to the catalog and we jump to that page. You know, you're still able to get to the library services and the library services pages through those other areas that I mentioned to you earlier, but to minimize those clicks, we're taking you right to the service. And then online permitting with Kelly and her team and the Acela, that is obviously a hot item on our website. Associated Assistance and Benefits is a lot of the eRap items and things that we've serviced during COVID and the things that Karen and her team at DHS work on, and then elections information. And I'm going to click on this one just to show you one example of an internal page, because that team works, has worked really hard. Carol Wyatt and Mr. Erickson over there at the Board of Elections have really put a lot of effort into making sure that their page, especially now as we're in election season, making sure their page is up to date, and if we have missed something, they let us know very quickly, or Wyatt actually has been doing a lot of the edits. And again, putting the ability to edit the site back into their hands has been critical. We were just talking about that this morning, prepping for this, that how much Wyatt and Carol have been able to do without interacting with the IT staff, and then all we have to do is approve it to make it get live onto the site. But again, we stayed with the concept of these three tops calls to action, so obviously, election schedule is something that people are looking for this time of year, absentee voting, and then one stop. I'm going to go ahead and click on this just as an advertisement for Carol right now and let everyone know that we are currently voting here in the, what do I call it? I don't remember. The Copperfield Center, sorry. I reference it often, too often, as the place next to KNW, so excuse me, but it gets people there. So anyway, so that's a, it's a good map of showing that. So I think that we're getting a lot of data and information out to the public using the site today. And then the other piece I wanted to show you on this page was, again, I talked about the scroll fatigue and the different issues. If you remember on the other site, there were a lot of these boxes, and there was, for Carol's, you know, section here for the elections, there were 22 different boxes that you could, that you could see. Well, rather than having to scroll through and identify these 20 different, 22 different things, we've personified them so that if you're a voter, you click on this, and these are what you're looking for. Obviously, if you're a candidate, you know, and you're looking for very specific information. If you're a precinct official, you're looking for your training and your other information, and then there's just, there's general information. So it's kind of broken that up a little bit more to allow folks to find what they're looking for a little bit faster. I'll get back to the homepage for you, Kasha, and let you take it over from here, I believe.
All right. So this middle section is something we've added to the site that we weren't able to do with our previous site. And as you can see, we have a fee segment. Last month, it focused on the litter sweep that was happening and also the Donate Life Month. This month, we've moved to Law Day, a walking tour of downtown Cabarrus that we're having to introduce folks to the work that the county government is doing, and we have Older Americans Month. So Todd, if you could click on the Older Americans Month, I want to show you what we're able to do with these sites. So typically, it would have been a news article or something that would be up for a little bit and then pass as new things are added in. By having it as a feature, we're able to put things on the side column, if you can stay up top.
Oh, sorry. Is that there?
No worries. So that side column there, we're taking resources that are on the website and presenting it in a new way. So somebody who might be interested in Older Americans Month and what we're doing there, other parts of the website list it. You can see there are benefits and assistance. Well, when we look at it from a human services angle, we focus on the assistance, and we focus on, you know, signing up for those kind of services, the economic services and things of that nature. But here, we can look at it from the benefits side of things and maybe introduce it to folks who wouldn't go onto a human services site to see if they qualify for things. So looking at it a different way, presenting it in a different way, but it all lands on the same information. If you click on that link, it redirects straight to the same page that you saw earlier for assistance and benefits. And then if you scroll down, we have these tabs that come up. So if you click on events, it can connect them to different things that are happening. We're able to put video within the text, which doesn't sound groundbreaking, but is actually kind of difficult for us to work in the previous site. If you go down to the next set of things, so we can have a Pam's Kitchen in there, and it's the way that we group things, the way we're able to present it, and again, we're not having to duplicate information on the site, rather present it in a way that we can make direct appeals to the various audience segments. And then we're also able to put links to that information on, if you go to the Alps website, the Alps pages of the site, in human services, it talks about Older Americans Month, so they're able to have some new, fresh content. That's kind of a sidebar that doesn't get in the way of a person's search for services, but is there if they need it. Of course, you've got your news releases and the service centers, the upcoming events, those can stay, and I believe there's a way to sign up to get the news releases sent to you. But it's all right there, and again, you can click on the various tabs and get to it without having that scroll fatigue. And then, of course, you've got your different service centers. Those focus on our strategic priorities. We've discussed that in the past, but it's just a cleaner way of laying out the information, easier to access, and hopefully with the search function, they're able to find what they need and maybe a few things they didn't need, like me at Target with the cart, right? You always leave with a little more than you intended to come in for. So that's my goal, is to turn our website into a Target cart. I think if you look at other websites, other county and municipal websites, you'll see a difference between ours and theirs. A lot of them are in the communications department solely, and that's for content purposes. It's a landing page. Folks get the information they need, and then they're able to make a phone call. The difference you have with the Cabarrus County website is that we connect to some 27 different vendors through our site. Vendors we use to provide online services, Excela, PayIt, and different sites that folks would never know that they were using because IT has done such a great job of connecting those. So when you look at the website and you try to think about function, while we have the information on the page, and we have departments that are placing that general content on there, the leap that you're not seeing is that backend connection to those 27 different sites. And those are the services that make us innovative. That's what puts us on the front lines of all these government technology awards. So that's been a great benefit to have, and that's something that's connecting well that took a lot of backend work to make going, to make happen in that six-month period. So that is what makes it stand apart. And I think if you look at the website, there are so many different options. There are 200 and some 20,000 people in Cabarrus County now. I think each of those individuals would have a different experience with the website. They would put in different search terms, they'd be looking for a different thing. They may find it easier than another person, they may have more difficulty. So as we have this website and we expand our use of it, we'll know better how folks are using it, the paths they take. We're able to use the analytics and improve those functions, but it's as varied as the number of people we have in the county.
One of the interesting pieces that, it's a new feature that I had not seen previously with websites, was this ability to click where, you know, what's around me, and so we just put in the government center's address here. And so the meeting that we're in now is, should show up here on the calendar feature, and it shows, well, that's the one coming up on the 16th, I clicked on the wrong one. But there are, click on it over here. So it'll tell us here that these, this is the work session that we're in, and this is going on here at 65 Church Street. And it shows the other municipal buildings here in the downtown area, and it's also overlaid over Google Maps, so obviously the things that we all know that are here in the downtown area show up on that map. So it's not something that we have to maintain outside of, in our GIS platform, but as Kasha creates events on the site and adds an address, and as all the departments, for that matter, for Alps or any of the other groups create events, they'll put them on the map in the appropriate location. So I thought that was a pretty intriguing opportunity for us to expand the use of the site and the way people can interact with our events.
So Todd?
Yes, sir.
We were able to interact with all of the departments. However, a few years now, we've been talking about that public calendar, and you said there might be a possibility that we could pull in certain nonprofits that would be able to have their schedule active on here as well, so.
Absolutely, sir. I think that's a great area where I think this is going to show up, and managing that through that events calendar is our intention. So we do, we mentioned that specifically during our project and plan to make that a next phase of the process. So yes, Ms. Honeycutt, we will, we have taken that challenge and plan to drive that home, so we've not forgotten about that. It was definitely on, it was on our board from the beginning when we whiteboarded where we wanted to go with the site and added that events opportunity to the board.
And as far as the next steps, I think, you know, we've worked with the departments. Lauren is one of the folks that we've worked with to get content on the site. They've taken on an additional role. They are not trained in website design and development. Luckily, we have a product that is fairly easy to use, and the more you use it, the more comfortable you get. But I think you'll see a clear investment from us in making sure they feel more comfortable with that. It was kind of a toss everything into getting it up and running and then invest the time and the attention into making them feel more comfortable with that.
Absolutely. The website is meant to be a living, changing, you know, document for us to be able to continue to communicate with the public and our constituents, so, you know, if we think that we just, if we ever think we're finished, we're headed in the wrong direction. So that is, our team's goal is to just keep, to continually change the site. So if there are things that you see or, you know, you hear from constituents that say, "I really wish we could have done this with the site," please bring those to us. We're always looking for those opportunities. And this is another section that we added to the site, just so that constituents have a better access to our board, and so you can click on each of these and get your contact information, so you have your 920 number and your county email address available there, so we can reach out to board members. But that's the, that is the quick run-through, live run-through of our website, and like I said, the platform's been extremely stable. I did fail to mention, we'd have these links additionally up here to our other external, our Twitter, our YouTube, Instagram, Facebook, and this coolly-designed Cabarrus County livestream. A little ago, I thought Kasha and Joe did a good job on that one. That was great.
I do have one question or comment moving, and I haven't looked at the site really, I've been on the new site, but I have not looked it real thoroughly, but I've had two people ask me, is there a company, like a county directory?
Yes.
That, and maybe I just missed it, but I didn't look very hard for it.
The live demo, remembering where I put it.
Specifically for like an email address or something like that?
Yes. It was under Contact Us, and then there's a directory for departments and employees. So if you wanted to find Todd Shanley, it also has that predictive search, so if you really didn't really know how to spell, and I just remember that guy I ran into in the halls named Todd, you can find all the Tods here at Cabarrus County, and here's my contact info. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I have had an opportunity to use it myself, and I have found it to be easy to navigate, and there is a ton of information on that website. And so to put every item and predict everybody's thinking, to put it the first on the page is an impossible task, and I think you've come very close.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We move now to discussion items for action. First up is item 4.1 from Active Living in Parks, Camp Spencer Pool Update. And so while Lundie is moving up, I will, before you begin that item, I'll ask you about another one. I received a phone call the other day from a frantic citizen who said that they had heard that the Board of Commissioners was eliminating one of their committees on aging and some impact to the senior center, which is, of course, one of the areas that you operate, and my response was... And my response was, I have no knowledge of any changes being made in that area. Can you give me any clue as to what they may have been talking about?
No. No. Yes, I received a phone call, or one of our staff members received a phone call as well. I called Commissioner Honeycutt because she is a liaison for the Advisory Council. And just let them know that what we had heard, that the Council on Aging was going to be disbanded. Nobody knew where it came from. That's just what they were told.
Yes, well, it is interesting where some of these stories begin. But I'm glad that we're able on live television to dispel that rumor.
Thank you.
And back to the issue at hand.
Nothing new from what y'all have heard tonight. Another, we don't have enough folks. Just as a refresher, the, we have contracted with Trident Pool Management Company for, this is, we're in the second year of a three-year contract. We, the first year, of course, this was pre-COVID. The first year, we did a one-year contract. Everything went well. And then we did the three-year contract, and we're in the second year of that now, which of course happened through COVID. And last year, you all may remember, we were closed a lot because they didn't have lifeguards that could come. We ended up, do you remember, Joshua?
From July to the end of the season, I think we were open like six days.
Yeah, we were closed more than we were open last year during our, from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And of course, it's only on the weekends until school is out. And then it's seven days a week after school is out. Then when school starts back, it's only weekends until Memorial Day. It, sorry, Labor Day. It was not anything uncommon for anybody around. I was talking with Lundy this morning, and she said that they were needing 6,000 lifeguards in Mecklenburg County to fulfill everything this year. So, and on my way to work this morning, and right at the bottom of Cabarrus Avenue, or Corbin Avenue, and Branchew is a sign from North Charlotte, I forget, North Charlotte Aquatic or something. They've got signs up in Cabarrus County looking for lifeguards and managers and workers. So, you know, it's nothing new. But Trident, who we are in contract with, only have at this, as of today, that's why this has become so important, as of today, there are only two lifeguards currently signed up to work Cabarrus County. Joshua was verifying, trying to verify that today. And to best of our knowledge, that is still all that we have for Cabarrus County. Joshua has talked with a few of the other folks that Trident works with, and Gaston County, or Gastonia is one. They gave a raise, additional on top of the existing contract, gave a $2 an hour raise that seemed to help them. We were hoping we wouldn't have to even request that, but that's where we are at this moment, seeing if we can get a $2 an hour raise in order to have the pool open this year. So Joshua, Joshua Kaufman, for you all that don't know, is the manager at Camp Spencer. And he works with Trident on a daily basis. And so if you want to fill in on anything.
I mean, y'all know where Camp Spencer's at. It's not in the best location. And I think that's their main issue is the location of the pool to get people to come out to work. I've sent them emails. They actually went to the Arena Event Center for the Job Fair. They've been to several schools. They emailed me. And then I sent them all the lifeguard, or not lifeguard, but the swim team information that we had on staff for more advertisement. We're posting on our Facebook page, stuff up in the parks. So we're trying to help them out as much as we can, but they are having a rough time at it. And that's just like every pool, like Londa said, I mean, it's just a tough time.
I could not give you one reason as to why lifeguards have been so difficult for the last few years. It's, and again, everywhere, not just here. Right now, on our camp counselors for the summer, we're okay. Our FOs, the concession workers, boat dock workers, we're okay on them. But the seasonal rangers, pretty much all of our seasonal staff, other than lifeguards from Trident, we're okay with.
It took a while for everything that we, I mean, I can speak for the seasonal rangers. We start in January, and I'm just feel comfortable now. And I got two people training this week. So it's been a process just for county staff to fill the positions, to keep the park safe and clean throughout the day.
So we did some math. And with the utilizing every day open, the maximum amount of time, we're looking at $6,700 to make, to have $2 an hour additional pay for our lifeguards. That includes the pool, the site manager, which is also a lifeguard. And as of, this should have been on your change information, is that we're asking that we could get a, an answer today so that we could advertise more and hopefully get rid, because we're looking at Memorial Day to open up. And so now we're in May. Let's see if you all would suspend the rules to hopefully vote in favor of that. If not, you know, we are where we are.
And to Londa's point, so this is something that typically, $6,700, we could handle it administratively. The reason it's before you is because it speaks to the broader issue around keeping this pool operational. So $2 may not fix the problem. And then how far do you go before you have to talk about either a reduction in hours or just closing the pool facility entirely? So we wanted to get some direction from the board so that we know sort of which direction we need to take things moving forward.
Anybody here want to be a lifeguard?
Well, I was going to suggest that maybe you could tutor us on how we give better advertisements. We're live on television now. We could sort of talk like what Lake Wobegon, you know, all our women are strong, our men are good-looking, and our children are above average. It's the best job in the whole world. And you get to see the most precious children that have ever existed. And we can think of some other things.
That's a great ad.
Yes.
We've had it on Facebook. We've had it on, the Kasha Communications has put it out through Direct Connect. I don't know that it's been in the newspaper yet.
I think it's, that email came out.
Okay.
That's going to, I don't think it has yet.
We've been at every job fair that there was this year. I think we've been to three different ones. We've given it to the schools. We've talked with the coaches of the swim teams. The only people I think we haven't been in touch with right now are the swim clubs, and they probably use their kids as their own lifeguards, would be my guess. But we're, we're in need definitely of lifeguards. And that Trident will certify them. So, you know, if you're, if you're out there and want to be a lifeguard and not certified, Trident will certify you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Prior to COVID and prior to the problems we're having now with staffing, how many lifeguards do we need to keep that open at its full capacity?
Our contract, so we have three out a day. Holidays, we have four. And our hours for the pool are 10 to 7. And then we bring one person in for like a swing shift during the busy time. So that's basically including when boys and girls come out and swim throughout the day. And then holidays, we do four, all days, what the contract states. So in reality, to staff it seven days a week, probably six to eight per day off in that aspect of it.
We only have two. That's not good. Okay, we're coming up on that holiday. We need to figure out how to get you some help, I think.
Unfortunately, this is a downside of, we do economic development. We talk about jobs, jobs, jobs all the time, you know? It makes that, jobs like this, unfortunately, a little bit less desirable because they got so many other selections to choose from. And so, you know, and I would imagine that we're probably going to see this trend continue for a while, you know, with these jobs. If, you know, we keep bringing jobs in, then it'll make it, you know, a little bit harder to get personnel because they got such a variety. All added supply and demand.
Maybe we need to be like the chief of Gold Hill and have a junior lifeguard program and start the kids out there earlier somehow. And I know the swim clubs do that, but we have not done that. But maybe it's something we can look at for sure.
I think it would probably be good, yeah.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a request to suspend the rules and consider this item of allowing the $2 per hour increase. What would be your pleasure?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And do I hear a motion on the request?
I make a motion to approve the additional increase of $2 an hour per lifeguard for a total of $6,700 for the season, the 2022 season.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So to Rodney's point, I guess you will just wait to hear back. If this doesn't really move the needle, or we're still in a bad way, then we, I mean, I hate to pick the negative side, but there may be some decisions that have to come up, coming down.
Exactly.
Yes.
And one of the things that Joshua said a while ago about is location. He said, well, not the best location, it's just a distance. As the, that company's out of Charlotte, and so the distance between a lot of the folks that they have, even the ones living here in Cabarrus County, it still amazes me how somebody will go to Camp Spencer, and they're like, "Oh, my gosh, this is the best park in the county. We didn't even know it was here." And they may have lived here for 30 years. So that, that doesn't help us any.
Well, and I mean, don't underestimate the power of the commercial.
That's right.
That we just gave as well.
All rights are yours.
Yeah. Any, any other discussion?
Is this something Kasha can put on, out on the county website or Facebook to help also? Because not everybody, younger people might not go to your website as frequently as some of the seniors might.
Yeah, definitely so. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes.
Thank you so much.
And good luck.
We'll definitely keep you informed as to what happens.
Very good.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Okay, we move now to item 4.2, and that's appointments to boards and committees. And all of you have received a copy of those earlier. Was there any discussion on any of those? I will say, we do, I think we have only one item, which is removal of the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, which I think we have seven or eight openings on that committee currently. So if there are folks that would be willing to serve in that capacity, we would love to hear from you. Okay, so we move now to item 4.3 from Cooperative Extension, Pollinator Garden at the Cooperative Extension Building. And we're glad to have Tracy Lacan to talk about that item.
Hello, I have two colleagues with me. Can we use this chair as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. If you guys want to come on up. We have our new horticulture agent. His name is Morgan Menaker. And I'll let him introduce himself. Then we have Bruce Bateman, who's also one of our Extension Master Gardener volunteers with us this evening.
Hello, good evening. My name is Morgan Menaker. I'm with the Cooperative Extension Agency, obviously. I'm coming to you all from Metro Atlanta Greenhouses. And today, we're proposing to install this pollinator garden on the north side of our office building. Really, the reason, there's a few. So the first is to provide educational programs to the community for the consumer horticulture programs in the county, teaching those about native pollinating plants and their importance and how they benefit pollinators. Second, the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. That's something that the mayor of the City of Concord signed last year in 2021, essentially promoting an increase in pollinating plants. This is a national program. So the monarch butterfly, the primary pollinator, excuse me, not the primary. The monarch butterfly is an endangered species. And we at the Cooperative Extension Office are trying to be stewards to bring their populations back up. So that's one of the other reasons.
And the Pollinator Demonstration Garden is one of the big needs that we have within people coming to our office. You know that our office is on the corner of 601 and Cabarrus Avenue. It's a highly trafficked area. And when people come to our office, they're commonly asking for native pollinators, examples of things that they can put in their landscape. As you well know, we have lots of new people that are moving to the area, learning how to grow things here in Cabarrus County, wherever they came from, as they're learning through things. And with our new building and growing landscaping and building those landscapes around their, both commercial buildings and through our private industries as well, and our private homeowners. So we are hoping to have one of the first educational lots here in the county. We're currently working in partnership with All Saints Church as well to do an education garden there. And we are sourcing native pollinators to work within this program. As you well know, the Cooperative Extension is a partnership between NC State Extension, NC ANT Extension, and here in the county. So we use the land here in Cabarrus County that you guys are able to offer us in partnership. But then our role is to be educators and stewards for the county and educate our population in any of those questions that they may have. So as you'll see on this screen, this has worked with lots of our master gardeners. Throughout the time, we've come up with a design of a location of where we can put this pollinator garden. So it comes to you because it was a, it will be an optics point that will be there on the front edge. So you see in the picture up here, Cabarrus Avenue on the corner of our parking lot in the building. So that's kind of the main design there, main location where that's going to be. But know that we are going to use a lot of our best practices when installing this pollinator garden. And that includes our kill method, which will be a slow kill method over time, where we're going to basically suffocate the plants instead of using chemicals to destroy them. So there will be a spot on the garden that will be dying as it goes through that process. We've worked with both the lawyers here in Cabarrus County and NC State to be able to draft a memorandum of understanding between the Master Gardeners, North Carolina Cooperative Extension, and the county within the roles and the understandings of who's going to play what role within the three different phases of how we're going to do that. Our plan is this fall to start with the kill method to prep and use our soil sample skills and things that we are able to, the services that we're able to provide to the public in a real-world setting so we can use those to educate, both get hands-on experience for our people, but also be able to offer that through the learning phase of how you can do something in your backyard to turn it into a native pollinator landscape. So we're looking at using this as an educational process for all of it, as well as obviously the end result as a demonstration garden, where we can use it for all of our 4Hers, the youth that are coming in through our 4H program, the adults that come in through our Family Consumer Science Agent, talking about even some of the, how pollination, the connection between pollination and the foods that we eat, and using that within our learning strategies there. So if you go to the next picture, you'll get a better idea of the Master. Do you want to talk a little bit about Hope?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So the design was put together by one of our Master Gardeners, Hope Duckworth. She has lots of experience with plants, pollinator plants, perennials, which will be in this garden. I believe there are 11 different varieties of plants, 78 plants total in this space. The space is about 960 square feet, so it's not a large area. The space is about 960 square feet, so it's not a large area. However, you saw previously that it does face 601 and Cabarrus Avenue, which is heavily drained. Our goal is education. We want to teach the public about the plants. We will have signage on each grouping of plants, not each individual plant, but if there's five of one particular plant, there'll be a sign there with a QR code that'll take them to the NC State Toolbox. They'll give them all the information that they need in case no one's there or someone's just passing by. They can look that information up on their own. We hope to install this this fall. We will not apply pesticides or fertilizers. We use native, we use compost and native malt, and we'll have a drip irrigation system that we will need to use until the plants are established. And then it will be based on Mother Nature and whether or not she provides the appropriate amount of rainfall and temperatures. So that's just really an overview of what it'll look like. There's a couple areas there that are orange, one on each side, one on the, on our left or on the left, and then one above that we were going to install seating benches in there. But because of the size of the garden, it's not that large, ADA would have come into play there. So ADA folks can still see the garden from the sidewalks around the perimeter and have access there.
So this, oh, it won't work on there. That's just crazy. So the top part of the screen there, you'll see that is the current sidewalk walkway that's against our building. And then the left facing side is the current sidewalk that's against the parking lot. So ADA compliance is allowable all the way around that. So they'll have access to everything around there. And then currently, the existing lawn will be on the south and east of this picture. That is not current appropriate terminology. But the benefit of having these things where we can educate the public for those native grasses and native pollinators and things to be able to use this in our teaching demonstration to show how you could change your landscape into these kinds of plants and have this available at an easily accessible location around our building is really important for us. It also grows a lot of our partnerships, and so Morgan's going to talk a little bit about that.
Sure. I'd like to add on the ADA compliance piece. There will be a sign on the parking lot side with the QR code and on the NC Plant Toolbox. For example, the All Saints Native Plant Demonstration Garden has before and after photos of the space that they've amended over time. So the folks that are on that parking lot side will be able to see the progress of the garden. They'll see that it was at one point just a lawn, and then we've transformed it into this space. And they'll be able to see all the different plants we've put into the landscape if they don't have accessibility to walk into the garden. So if we could go to figure four, please.
The next one.
Okay, so this is the proposed signage that we put on the kiosk there to describe the garden. You can see our partners there. Obviously, the Extension Master Gardener volunteers are going to be the ones caring and tending for the plants in that garden, doing the weeding, turning that drip irrigation on and off, any sort of pruning or maintenance in that aspect. The plants are being donated by the North Carolina Wildlife Federation. It's about $1,000 worth of plant material that they're donating to the cause. That was brought about through the Concord Wildlife Alliance. One of our members, Hope Duckworth, the one who drafted the design, is a part of that organization as well, and she was able to work that out with the North Carolina Wildlife Federation. The City of Concord did free consultation for us on stormwater drainage, so there's no risk to the building. All the current pipes and sewage drainage is all good to go, so.
So as far as funding, we are able to work with Infrastructure and Asset Management and Mr. Billford to help us get all of those sources. We do have, our Master Gardeners have some funding that they're putting forth in it. So fortunately, we are not asking for staff nor money to be able to do this, which is a very exciting thing to be able to do in this time. But we are asking for your approval because of the optics and understanding that it will obviously take time, that yes, we can kill it with chemicals and be ready and just plow it under within a month and have it all ready to go. But knowing that we are going to do it in using best practices, that we're going to use this as an educational field, it will take a little bit of time throughout the process of removing the grass and that is there currently. And then also installation this fall, knowing that this fall is our best timing for planting some of our woody ornamentals and natives and trying to figure out when that planning is going to be. So we ask for your patience upon that, but also your approval before we get started or moving forward with that. Does anybody have any questions on the garden and the proposal?
Just one quick question.
Sure.
I love the idea. In the diagram with the, it's actually the overhead.
Yes.
It looks like it goes pretty close to the road. Are we sure we're not in the DOT right away?
So it's not, that is not to scale.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're off enough.
Yes.
Okay.
So the garden goes about halfway between the roadway and the sidewalk that's adjacent to the building.
Okay.
But we are working with IEM to make sure that everything will be good before we go in.
Okay. Because I was like, if it's that close, my other concern was trash, you know, people going down the road, roadways, that type of thing.
Okay.
Okay, I'd hate for you to work that hard to ruin or have a problem. Okay.
Absolutely. And that's, there are, within the MOU, the conversations that have already happened and will continue to happen between us and the Infrastructure and Asset Management to make sure that we are doing all of our due diligence in that. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it will be beautiful. And thank you for all of you that are willing to participate in it. I will say that you have just pointed out all of the best practices that I do not follow. So now you're making me feel guilty when I go out with my Roundup and my Tiller, et cetera. So.
Well, don't.
So you've, so you've, you've done the education thing.
Educated.
Exactly.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for your time. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Okay, we move to item 4.4, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Allocation of Funding, and Rodney Harris is going to lead us through that.
Each year, the JCPC brings you around this time of year, two separate items for you to approve. So the first is the certification document that is required by the state. The only thing I would note there is that we do have some vacancies on the JCPC council, primarily in the under 21 age group. But the council is working actively to recruit those individuals to get into compliance on that particular standard. And then, not in your packet, but a sheet that was on your dais before the meeting is the funding plan. And these are the same organizations that were funded in the prior year, and so you should be familiar with all of them. And so this is approving that funding plan for the next fiscal year.
Questions on that item, Commissioners? I will say that I serve on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and that group is extremely diligent in the process that they go through in examining all these funding decisions every year. All of the organizations on the list are interviewed extensively and make presentations. So they are, they're very serious about their responsibilities in the way that they handle those funding, that funding and those programs. Anything else, Rodney? Okay. If there are no questions, we will move to item 4.5, One-Time Purchases, and Rodney is going to handle that one as well.
Each year, as part of the annual budget process, our departments submit, in addition to their personnel requests and other funding requests, one-time requests. And we typically will bring to you this time of year those one-time requests for consideration. And so before you, you have about $2.4 million of one-time requests that we are recommending for funding. And the source for this is, I mentioned earlier, the Medicaid Hold Harmless Money. And so as you can remember, several years ago, the state took on accountability for the Medicaid claims here locally. And in, they took a sales tax source from us to help pay for those. In years where the Medicaid claims are less than what that sales tax revenue would have been, we get that back to the county in form of basically a rebate. And so that is exceeding budget by about $4.4 million in the current year. And so we're recommending about $2.4 million to be used for these one-time purchases. And then you will have an agenda item later where an additional $2 million will be allocated to shore up our health insurance fund. And so I did want to briefly talk about sort of the use of these funds. And rather than myself doing that, I was going to have some visitors, so either Sheriff Shaw or Chief Bailey. And then I'm going to go first to Deputy Chief Brines, who can talk to the investments in the new EMS headquarters and what the funding will accomplish there. And so if you're there, Justin, if you don't mind speaking briefly about that.
I am, can I help you okay?
Yes.
Apologize, I'm remote, we're out of town. Jimmy's here with me as well, Chief Lance. But we are, the funding that we're asking for, I have the amount for simulation equipment for the new headquarters. We have had a plan, the design, to have a very high-tech simulation area, including an immersion room where we can project things, calls onto the wall that include scent and sound, very realistic environment for our folks to train in, as well as some, a simulation mannequin, a mid-fidelity simulation mannequin that allows to do skills and manage patient care in that capacity, and then also the ability to record and playback scenarios where our folks can watch themselves in the scenario and then be debriefed. We have, obviously, the infrastructure in the plan, but we, we were seeking funding for all the equipment to go with it. So that is what we're asking for here. This will be one of the most advanced technology areas for EMS, at least in this region that we're aware of, where we'll be able to, you know, appreciate that as well as share it with other counties and potentially have folks come train with it. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions for Justin? All right, thank you, sir.
And then if we can, real quick, just have Sheriff or Chief. As you can see on the list of items, a significant portion is for the sheriff's office. And so part of that is for the bomb unit. And so I wanted them to talk briefly about those investments.
Yeah, the two largest requests there are for the replacement of the bomb response truck and also what's referred to as a total containment vessel. The reason for the replacement is both of these are over 20 years old. So they were bought over 20 years ago when the bomb squad was originally established. And the total containment vessel is outside of its life. To give you an idea, it is a, it's a big sphere-shaped device that sits on a trailer. And the concept is if you were to find an explosive device, you place it in the total containment vessel. It shuts and locks down, and that device can go off inside the containment vessel without damaging anything around it. So it's ideally, if you don't want to take an explosive device and move it long distances, you bring the, you bring the total containment device to the bomb, as opposed to the bomb somewhere else. Obviously, it weighs a tremendous amount, so the bomb squad truck has to be able to pull it. So this truck, the particular truck is rated for tow capacity of 21,000 pounds, to give you some idea. So they work in together. They're also, they're also required equipment if you have a bomb squad. Our bomb squad is, for lack of a better term, regulated or overseen by the Federal Bureau of Investigation. And if you're going to be a bomb squad, you're required to have a total containment vessel and a response truck as part of that. So like I said, it's been in service for both of them. They were bought together. Obviously, inflation has impacted the prices of everything, and those are the two major items that are on that list.
Just curious, is there, that's probably a dumb question, but is there technology in these trucks that, over 20 years? I mean.
Yes, I mean, it's, you know, saying it's just a truck is a gross oversimplification. The bomb squad also operates a robot in order to go downrange, pick up devices, X-ray devices, do all those types of things, photograph them, even destroy the devices if need be. So inside that truck is the operational center for that robot, as well as the ability to view X-rays that are taken of a device so they can be brought back to the truck. It has a safe communication equipment that's in there as well. It also has storage for all the bomb suits that go in there, the bomb suit helmets. Everything that they use is in there, as well as a tremendous amount of technology that makes everything else work together. So it's manufactured by a company that specializes in making bomb trucks.
I can imagine how outdated 20 years ago must be.
Ours is extremely outdated. To give you an idea, we operate our robot with a video game console hand device. It works, but it's actually for a gaming system is how we're currently doing it, so.
And you'll hear about the robot shortly.
Yeah. Does the vendor provide the training necessary to operate this?
Yes, they do on the particular, like, total containment vessel, as well as the truck. They'll make sure that they are. And let me say this, the truck body itself that holds all that technology, we selected a company that has a 20-year warranty on the truck body itself that will be placed on the chassis. And obviously, you don't put thousands and thousands of miles on this truck. So your body is that more important piece to make sure it's being able to stand up. So hopefully, 20 years from now, it'll come back and say, we need a replacement vehicle and not before.
And one thing I found interesting talking to Chief Bailey about this is these, this original equipment was not purchased locally. And so I believe it was federal money that bought the original equipment, which is why it's all coming due at the same time, because it was all purchased at once. And so some board 20 years from now will be having to replace this equipment, assuming it gets approved.
So in 20 years, what would be your just off the head estimate of how many times that total containment unit has been used to contain an explosive?
We, to contain an explosive.
Whatever, I'm assuming that's what you do with it.
Yes, to, as far as callouts are concerned, where we've utilized the equipment, we average over the, over the past 10 years, we've averaged 45 callouts a year. So it stays busy. The sphere degrades, so, you know, as it gets older, they no longer guarantee that it won't come apart when something blows up inside it. But it's been used, I can't give you a figure, but it's not used on every callout, but it's used on probably at least half.
But you got to have it.
You have to have it. You want to have somewhere to put it.
Right.
Exactly. I mean, I know that's an oversimplification, but it, it is part of the reason is to safely get it out of area, populated areas, those types of things. Because most of our calls, the majority of our calls are courthouses and schools is where we get our bomb threats. And of course, retail centers where things are abandoned, those types of things. But we also do disposals with the bomb squad. So if there is, one of the most common things is that someone passes away and they have a military, an old military-grade explosive or a hand grenade that they've kept for years and years, we've got to do something with it. Same thing with dynamite that sit there and crystallized and has become very unstable. So we dispose of that as well for the safety of the public.
And this is the only bomb squad in Cabarrus County?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Part of the original formation, and it falls under, there are only 12 bomb squads in North Carolina. And being that we're part of the urban areas' security initiative, we have a bomb squad here, there's one in Gaston County, and of course, Charlotte has its own. But Charlotte resources typically remain in Charlotte when there's a high-threat level. So we assist other counties adjacent to us if they need that resource as well. And in return, we get some dollars training-wise, maintaining certification-wise, and periodic pieces of equipment from the FBI to keep the standardization be among all the bomb squads across the state, if that makes sense. So that, if you remember several years ago, with the Lowe's bombing, where we had a bomb placed at Lowe's on the Parkway, as well as, there was a Lowe's in Greensboro, I believe, no, Salisbury and Ashboro. So our bomb squad responded to the one here in Lowe's, found the device, and was able to dispose of the device safely where it did go off in the two other stores that were related to that. So some of this, we also seek, which is coming before you this evening as well, is funding from the Urban Area Security Initiative. So we did get an award that was more related to our robot. We're going back before then. They get, they get Department of Homeland Security dollars. And so we try to be at the table to get as many dollars from them as we can. But we share that, we share that money with Mecklenburg, Gaston, as well as Rock Hill or York County, because they're part of the urban area initiative as well.
Forty-five times that it's used in here? Are those all in Cabarrus, or is that cumulative of everywhere?
That's cumulative of everything, but we do more in Cabarrus than we do others. The most recent response out of county was to Baden Elementary School, where they had a bomb threat, and we responded to there. That's kind of hard to say no to, when you're the only one that's within a reasonable amount of time.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
All right, we will move to item 4.6 from Department of Human Services, Transportation Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act and Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Cares Act. And we're happy to have Bob Bushey to talk with us about this item.
Thank you and good evening, Commissioners. The Federal Transit Administration recently released unobligated funding for the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act Fund in 5310. They in turn released that money to Cabarrus County and Rowan County. I'm sorry, the City of Concord received it from the Federal Transit Administration and then released it to Cabarrus County and Rowan County. Cabarrus County is receiving $35,018. That will be used for fuel. This is 100% federal money with no local match. It will require a budget amendment for the revenue, if you so approve. This money will be used, it can be used all the way back as far as December 27, 2020, so we can go ahead and get reimbursed for funds we've already spent. We're just asking for you to accept the money from the City of Concord and the associated budget amendment for revenue.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bushey? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item 4.7 from Finance, Cabarrus County School Agency and Lease Agreement for R. Brown McAllister Elementary and Updated Lease Agreement for Robertimo Road Middle School. And we're happy to have Wendy Hagler for that item.
Good afternoon. Brian Cohen was here, but he had to leave there. Actually approving these same agreements that the school we're meeting tonight. The lease agreement revision was needed for Robertimo Road Middle School, because we were going to use it for collateral for our 2022 A refunding of our first draw program. And of course, R. Brown McAllister, the lease agreement and agency agreement is needed for, so we can request the sales tax reimbursement. And that will be part of the new draw program. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I guess, explain that a little bit. School systems aren't allowed to ask for sales tax?
Correct. There's a state entity, so they are not allowed to ask for sales tax. And the county can request sales tax. We can even request the sales tax that is spent for construction. Somebody don't have to pay that directly. The contractor pays it. They tell, they give us a report each month, and we request that sales tax back annually.
And so sales taxes on $38 million, what's the price on R. Brown?
I think our budget's around 38.9 now.
Thirty-eight, so, yeah, sales tax on $39 million is no small amount of money.
Not at all.
Yes. Okay, any questions for Wendy? Okay, I think Wendy has the next item, Government Accounting Standards Board Statement.
This is a fun item. So the Government Accounting Standards Board is requiring a new standard that we're required to implement for this fiscal year. Currently, we have operating leases and capital leases in our financial statements, and that's going to go away, and then we'll account for it this new way that the lease, or the GASV A7 is requiring. What we are asking for approval for is a lease threshold. If you get too down the weeds with this, you can, there's a lot of leases that the county has on both, it's both for the revenue side and the expenditure side. And we would, this accounting is very detailed. You're doing principal and interest even for small amounts. So we're asking that you set the lease threshold at $100,000. And that is far below our materiality for our financial statements, which is around $6.5 million. And then we'll also need a necessary budget amendment. I don't have the numbers at this time, but we'll enter this before the end of the fiscal year. There's no county money involved, and it would basically just be lease proceeds and equipment expense, and it would just be an accounting entry. I'll be glad to answer any questions on GASV A7.
I thought you might want a lesson on accounting standards.
I don't even want to know about this, GASV A7.
Okay, 4.9, Health Insurance Fund Balance Amendment. Wendy again, Wendy again several times in a row.
So Rodney, you mentioned before the Medicaid Home Harmless dollars. And we're going to, in addition to $2 million from the Medicaid Home Harmless, we're also appropriating another $1 million that we have in fund balance to cover our expenses through the end of the year. We have had claims that are a little higher than expected, more than we originally budgeted. And of course, at the end of the fiscal year, you don't want to be over in any of your funds or accounts, because that is an audit exception. So this will well cover us through the end of the year and hopefully allow some money to drop into fund balance. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, don't hear any questions on that one. We'll go to 4.10, opioid settlement.
So as you know, the county is going to receive money from opioid settlements, and we are required to set up a special revenue fund to account for the revenues and expenditures that we receive. We wanted to go ahead and set that up, because we are expecting some funds to be received, some funds before the end of the year, and then to get some more in the summer. Between those two, we're estimating to be about $1.3 million. And we, this budget amendment and the project ordinance is budgeting that revenue, and it's just putting in a miscellaneous expense until we get further, I guess, direction from the board of how we want to spend these funds.
Any questions on that one?
There are severe, no, severe might not be the right word. There are restrictions on what we can do with that money because of the settlement and where it comes from, and it has to be directly related to either expenses we incurred or prevention-type things or something? Yes, okay.
Okay, Dr. Spalding, you'll be good? I'll be happy to.
But you're here, and you've been so patiently waiting.
So in January, Rowan-Cabarrus Community College came to us and asked for additional funds for a welding lab. We gave them additional funding and transferred some money from some completed projects. Whenever this was bid, they have an additional $155,000 that they will not need for the welding lab, and they're asking permission to use this for a paramedicine lab.
Okay, questions on that item? I think both are welcome additions, both the welding and the paramedicine.
Yeah, just, well, thank you. It looks like with this bid and the, the building will be open to welding classes in August. That's really fabulous. And then this paramedicine lab, I think, will help us if we're trying to hire new staff for Cabarrus County. So thank you very much for your investment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move to 412.
It's my last one, but there's a lot here. So each year, we come to you and sort of shore up our capital project funds for the year. So there's adjustments to our small projects fund, the sheriff's fund, the county capital project fund, and the school capital project fund, as beginning. And in the county capital project fund, we're allocating those dollars, the $7.5 million that we received from the state and the $700,000 we received from the state, we're going to use that, we're budgeting that for Franklin's Park. And it's also budgeting the 1.6 that we allocated from the American Rescue Plan. So those are increases to the county capital project fund. And we're, the next paragraph, I'm closing five funds, and as part of that closure, there's $188,750 that was allocated for Conapolis County City Schools. And they would like to move that for two playgrounds, one for Fred L. Wilson and one for Forest Park Elementary. And this budget amendment would move those funds. And then the rest of it is closing five completed capital project funds. And any funds left over is moving to the community investment fund, so you can use those for... I did add it up, I think it's a little over $3 million that we're moving back to the community investment fund from these completed funds in total. And I know there's a lot here, but I'd be glad to answer any questions, or after you look at it, glad to answer.
Any questions on that item? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item 4.13, from Infrastructure and Asset Management, request for public art placement at Rotary Square. We're happy to have Kyle Billiford back for that one.
I brought some help this time also. Can you cue up the presentation? Thank you. So the county was approached by Full Time Funky Town. And I know on the agenda, it does say Funk Town. That was the first email that I got. It was left out of why. So, but it's Full Time Funky Town about displaying public art sculptures at Rotary Square. County staff and the Full Time Funky Town are here to present kind of the proposal, the specifics, discuss some of those specifics, and discuss kind of the legal aspects and other details, if the board wants to entertain this. The county staff will be looking for direction from the board on how to proceed with this request. If the board wishes for staff to pursue this, we'll request a motion will need to be made to reflect that direction. And county staff would have to work with Full Time Funky Town on the locations, the pads, and everything like that. We've already met out there twice now and looked at this. And I, I had asked them to put together a presentation, and Doyle can introduce himself and kind of give some background of Full Time Funky Town and also what they're proposing.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Doyle Bussie. And I'll give you a quick overview of Full Time Funky Town, which is our nonprofit. Please feel free to ask any questions while I go. I'm better at Q and A than just constantly spewing. But, so, we were started formally back in 2020 with a desire to have more public art in Concord and the area. Not being willing to wait till somebody else did it, we decided we'd form a group and try and pursue public art. And so with that, we've developed a mission statement where we are, want to be the liaisons between artists, creatives, and landowners and other people interested in getting art placed. We're not the artists, we're facilitators. And along with that, we got our, incorporated by the state earlier this year as a nonprofit, and then with the feds as, you know, nonprofit for tax stuff. And that's really to better raise funds, apply for grants, that sort of thing. You know, we need money for things, of course. Can I, bear with me one second?
I think they can control it for you here.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay, next slide, thanks. Yeah. Real quick, these are our founding members. That's my ugly mug in the middle. David and Kat would have been here, but they are actually vacationing in Disney World right now. So I'm the sole representative for tonight. But the three of us are the founding members, and that's what we've got so far. We're longtime citizens. We're local folks that have been in Concord for a number of years. You can roll to the next one, if you would. We've got some number of projects in the pipeline, but the first one really to see the light of day is a sculpture show. And this is loosely based on the Salisbury Sculpture Show, if any of y'all are aware of that. They've been running a nice show up there for a number of years. And as you can see in the picture, here's an example of some of the sculptures that we have lined up for the show. And this, these are done by local artists, regional artists. Some, I think the furthest one away is Pennsylvania right now. But most of them are in North Carolina. Our proposal for the show is to have a one-year rotating show. So the sculptures will go up for a year, and then they'd come down after a year. And hopefully, in future years, more sculptures, a different sculpture would go up in place of the sculpture. And if you'd roll to the next one, please. Here's just a quick map of where we've got sculptures now. We've got them in, well, they're not in yet, but we've got agreements to have them in private residences on Union Street, businesses. We've got some at Clearwater, which is a city-owned place. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. And then we're proposing to have two in Rotary Square. We love Rotary Square, because it's just high traffic, lots of visibility. And if you'd roll to the next slide again, please. These are the two sculptures we're proposing, along with a map showing approximate locations. And of course, we'd, with Kyle, we'd want to make sure they're not over something that could be damaged underneath a drain or irrigation pipe or anything like that. And these would have, once they're placed, they'd be on concrete pads, and they'd have a sign that would say, "Do not climb" or "Do not touch," something like that, along with some description of the sculpture artist, maybe artist statement, that sort of thing. QR codes, we want to do to have people that are interested go to wherever QR codes go. That's my partner's thing. I'm not really sure where those go. But to learn more information about the sculpture and so on, and the show in general. So in summary, our ask is, we would like to put two sculptures in Rotary Square for a year. That's our ask right now. We don't ask, we don't need, well, we're not asking for financial assistance or anything like that. However, if you found it in your hearts, we sure would love to have some money. However, if you found it in your hearts, we sure would love to have some money. And then finally, because we're new and this is our first kind of public project, we're having an event at Southern Strain to introduce ourselves, introduce the sculpture show, hopefully raise a little money. And we'd like to invite you all to come if you're interested, two weeks from today. And that's my summary, pretty much. If there's any questions, of course.
I give a little background on why I was reached out to, because I'm sure you're thinking it's because of the public art in the courthouse. It's not. I'm the original person that was involved in the design of Rotary Square with the actual Rotary Group. And during the first couple programming and design meetings before we ever got to construction drawings, if you, if you look at the aerial or you were looking at the aerial of Rotary Square, it's got those triangles and their planted beds. Well, originally, someone's idea was to have sculptures there. And it never came to fruition, it never even made it past a sketch. It never went into the drawings and it never went into the agreement that we have with the City of Concord and Rotary. But David, who sits on the board with Doyle, the gentleman with the rabbit ears in the picture, he had reached out to me and said, "I understand from the original design, there was supposed to be sculpture in there." And I kind of went through the process and then I agreed to meet with them and kind of explain to them how this would work if we were to move forward, that the pieces of art would have to have no edges, it had to be safe, we'd have to have a legal agreement that protects us and protects you all. And then the placement would have to be exactly where you're not hitting drainage, electric, irrigation, or our sewer line, which is, it's a very small site, so it's like a needle in a stack of needles. But we have identified those two spots. And of course, the county would handle the concrete to put in place, just so that it was done right and did not damage any of the lines. But that's going to give you a little bit of background that I think some of you might ask those questions.
We have anchors in the concrete to hold these anchors in the, what stabilizes them?
Yeah, weight typically. So the artists would have to tell us if they want us to anchor. And in some cases, they do, in some cases, they don't.
I would hazard to say, all the sculptures we've got, not just Rotary Square, but all around, everywhere, will be anchored to the ground. They're just, it's just too risky to risk tipping them over.
Yes, I got one more question. As you know, there's a lot of kids over there running to and fro and not paying attention to anything, not even the streets or whatever. Are those, what's the material on the page? Are those sharp edges or?
They're thick aluminum that's been edged or rounded, edged. So I've, I haven't looked at page, I've looked at another one that that similar artist did with the same material. And it's not as rounded as touching the edge of this table because it's thinner, but it's, you wouldn't get cut, let's say, if you rubbed your hand on it. So that, that's aluminum, that, the page, and the other one is steel.
So if this is something the board wants us to pursue, obviously it would just be a one-year agreement. I don't, the county, I had expressed, I didn't think we were willing to commit to any more net. We would take one year at a time. And obviously, we had worked with Full Time Funky Town to make the locations, handle the concrete, make sure that everyone was safe, and then obviously work with our attorneys on the legal agreement, insurance and everything. But kind of wanted to bring it in front of the board to see if that was of interest.
Questions?
Yeah, what kind of cost we looking at? I mean, you said you didn't ask for anything, but in the event we decide we wanted to, what's the typical contribution?
So our whole budget for the whole show is $15,000, of which we, if we don't get any money from any, you know, we'll raise the money, that's our commitment. Typically, people that have, that are, well, we're paying the, each artist a stipend of $1,000. And that's the main cost of the whole thing. I mean, we've got, we've got a lot of volunteers helping us doing anchoring and putting concrete pads elsewhere, that sort of thing. But it's, you know, 10 to 12 of that is for the artists. And of course, we're a nonprofit, we don't, we're not, all money we get is going to flow right back out to wherever. But I mean, we take $10.
Well, I think it would be-
We'd take $5,000 even more, 50 times more.
It would be a great addition to the Rotary Square and something we hadn't done a lot of in the years past, at least as long as I can remember anyway. But I would surely be open to making some type of a contribution toward that. Maybe, I don't, I don't know, I don't like to throw out amounts, but maybe, maybe $5,000 from the county would be, would be a reasonable amount, I think, you know, because it would add that much to the, to the Rotary Square.
Yeah.
That's just my thoughts, whatever the other guys think.
Now, just to be clear, these are, at least for the first, they're, we're not demanding that the artists have them for sale, but I, and I can't speak for the artists, but I think they're all for sale. But this would be a loan for a year for these, for these two. And then if you all decided to keep the pads and work with us, we would find two more different sculptures for next year that would fit whatever the existing pads we end up with. But that would go a long way to making it happen for all the way around.
Kyle, you said we would be in charge of the concrete pads, is there a cost to us on the concrete pads itself?
You can bring in temporary, they can bring in portable concrete pads or we can pour something that would maybe have a little bit more width to it so we could sustain future art that had a heavier load to it. I mean, less than $1,000 what we would put into that, they're pretty small.
Yeah, I didn't figure it was going to be that much, but I just was curious on that.
The reason that, I think, the reason that the county would like to handle it is it allows us to kind of level it off and install it and make sure that nothing gets cut, cracked, or broken underneath.
And I would, I would agree.
And we'd appreciate that, too.
I just have one more question, too, Kyle. You know, with the Means Avenue, we're going to be doing something there. I know we've got the charters of-
Freedom.
Freedom going to be in there. Do you have plans for anything else in that area?
We added some, some concrete that can withstand a couple of their loads to be able to put public art there in the future. But we don't have electric to it and it really has not been identified as a, as a project yet. And I would say, with the plaza going up in GMP3, it would probably be a year after opening before we started to start that process. I think you'd probably end up, I would imagine the board would want me to do a full-blown RFQ process for that or team up with the Arts Council and let them do, do it, run it that way.
As far as looking for feedback, I think it's a nice, a nice addition to the, to the square. And so, obviously, with the foot trap, I mean, you know, with the legal agreement and safety and all this, all of that part has to be addressed, but I certainly trust that you all will do that. But as far as a concept, I think that's kind of a nice way to have something cultural in downtown Concord.
Other comments or questions? I think it's a tremendous idea and the only question I had, you answered, which was how, I know that the Concord Rotary Club invested a lot of time and attention into helping establish that park and so wanted to make sure they were on board with it. It sounds like that was part of the plan to start with.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure that the folks that were involved with it from the beginning are, are now involved with Rotary like that. But I did email the folks over at Rotary and told them what was being planned. But again, legally, in terms of the agreement, they have no, no say, but we did, Mike and I did email them.
Yeah, we want everybody to be happy.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, and the, the concept of that being a rotating, changing opportunity, I think, is attractive as well. The fact that it may be there for a year and we may have two other pieces of art there the next year, if it goes well. And so, so thank you very much, you and your organization for, for bringing that opportunity to us. Hopefully, that will begin some more. And I have enjoyed the things that you have done previously. And the, I recognize the pieces at, at the center down on Kerr Street, Clearwater. And so, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. We will move to item 4.14. Huntersville Land Development Services Interlocal Agreement. And we're happy to have Susie Morris to talk with us about that item.
Good evening. I was waiting for Lauren to, there's a map that she's going to put up that will help to explain this. So, the town of Huntersville has actually crossed the Cabarrus County line over near Skybrook. As part of that annexation process, we needed to try to figure out what county services were going to be provided by Cabarrus County, what Mecklenburg was going to provide, and then also the town of Huntersville. So I think a month or two ago, we heard from Mr. Thrift as far as taxes for Cabarrus County to be collecting taxes for the town, on behalf of the town of Huntersville. So essentially, this is just kind of another service that we needed to work through. So the area that Huntersville now has at the county line is everything that is in green. If you're familiar with that area, that is the area behind the Nomad Aquatic Center. So it pretty much wraps around, it will include the house that's behind it and also the cell tower that is behind that location has also been annexed. The little K-looking part across the county line is also part of this project. It will be another phase of Skyrock. So in working through this, we needed to decide who would provide those services. Attorney Goldberg was an integral part of those conversations to help facilitate it with Mecklenburg County, with Harrisburg, with their legal staff. We also had conversations at the staff level to try to figure out how they handle it best. So what you have before you this evening is an amendment to the agreement that the town of Huntersville already has with Mecklenburg County. What would happen is for land development services, so that is zoning permitting and building inspections, all of that would be handled by Mecklenburg County. There's very few lots that are actually beyond the Cabarrus County side. It just made sense, since Mecklenburg already had that type of agreement in place, to allow them to take over the inspection side for Cabarrus. And, you know, we do this sometimes when it comes to projects at the county line. And 160D now actually has this officially written into it where you can, if it splits a county line, the two jurisdictions can agree on how that project is developed, under whose regulations, and then also how those services move forward. EMS stays with the county, but other than that, pretty much everything will be handled by Mecklenburg. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
And I would add, my conversations with Huntersville has made clear that they really don't have any intent to go beyond the annexation. This is just kind of a, an offshoot of a development that they're having on their side in Mecklenburg County. There really just isn't that much more space to get, left to go. So, we did discuss, if they did try to go further in the county, we'll have to come back around and figure out the best approach. But for about 20 lots, you know, some residential houses, this is, you know, this is the easiest kind of path, the best pathway for, for everyone. So, the good thing about this agreement is, is we don't have to do anything. And all we're acknowledging is, is that we don't have to do anything. The other discussions we've had, again EMS, and then also the sheriff's office, there's some, I've also had discussions with the district attorney, make sure that we're all clear that, you know, there is a chunk now that, in theory, they may have cases involving Huntersville PD in Cabarrus County and subject to jurisdiction. So there are just a couple of things we'll, we'll have to work through these over the next couple of months and years even, and just be aware of.
And if you, if you remember, on the last November ballot, that is the reason why the town of Huntersville showed up on the Cabarrus County's county ballot, because they were also electing some officials in their jurisdiction.
And that is, and the Board of Elections has already handled all their deal, they've worked that all through. So we're on our way, just, it caught us, we're working through it.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to item 4.15. Public Participation Policy for Board of Commissioners Meetings. David has been working on that item as well. As you all know, we had some discussion at our last Board of Commissioners meeting about appropriate behavior of folks participating in public comment sessions as well as just general attendance of our meeting. We had requested Mr. Goldberg to take a look at, at the formulation of a policy so that we could more clearly outline to members of the public what sort of behavior was acceptable at our meetings. I think all of you received a copy of that earlier this week. And so we wanted to, to have a discussion about that, give any of you an opportunity to ask David any questions. He has looked very, very carefully at, at what is legally appropriate and available to us. So I'll let David go ahead and start off that discussion.
Sure, so based on the concerns expressed by the Board a few weeks ago, we did, Rich and I did some legal research and provided you a draft public participation policy. The best way to sum it up is that we would consider, when we open this public meetings, it's considered a limited public forum, meaning that, you know, we cannot, this is protected from viewpoint-based discrimination. So we are not going, you know, people have a right to express their feelings in these public particip, in these, these public comment periods. But we do have the ability to offer reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on how those opinions are expressed in a way that's designed to maintain the decorum and dignity and efficiency of the meetings. And so that can come in a lot of different forms, about how long you speak, how, the order, prioritization, what happens if we have too many speakers, too much interest. But it also can come into how the point is made in the sense of tone, yelling versus being soft-spoken. You can express yourself in both ways in the content. But one, it being loud or boisterous or even aggressive can be disruptive to the efficiency of the meeting and can detract from the messages and the solitude in important business of the board. Also, things like personal attacks that are mentioned as far as that goes. Things that are ad hominem, individualized, that are unrelated to a public official's work or conduct or qualifications. Those can be regulated to a degree to, again, to maintain the reasonable decorum and dignity of the, of the function and to maintain efficiency. So just working through the policy, one is a requirement for maintenance of order and decorum. It really just comes down to speakers must be respectful and observe proper decorum in their statements by reframing from vulgarity, obscenities, profanity, speaking in a tone or manner that threatens disruption or other light breaches of respect. So it's not about what you say, it's about how you're saying it and how that can impede in the commission, the board's ability to do business and to maintain order. Coming off of that is, again, is also speakers may utter personal ad hominem attacks towards board members. But it's very clear as we go on that, that we're, you know, discussing substantive concerns of public interest regarding a person's conduct or qualifications are completely appropriate and legitimate. It's just about making, you know, comments about a person's age or disability or something unrelated to their ability to perform their duty that has been upheld by the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals as being able to be controlled to a, to a degree. a degree. Relevance, um, there, you know, these, there is a, the, the public hearings in particular, so when they're called for a specific purpose, uh, are, we can, if appropriate, constrain what people, uh, the topics that are broached in these public hearings. So if we have a public hearing on economic development and someone wants to talk about the, the Sheriff's Office in the, as far as like the dog catch or, or the animal control, that would be irrelevant and wouldn't be appropriate for a public hearing, though it would make, probably be appropriate for a informal public comment of more open setting. The, the other thing is restrictions on, uh, periods for commercial advertisements, solicitations, or supporting opposing a candidate for public office. Those are generally things that would be irrelevant to a public proceeding, and, uh, it wouldn't be an appropriate use of time if the Board so, uh, so found. But that is a very common restriction that has been upheld by the courts. Um, the other thing is, is comments about minors. We would ask speakers to not, um, identify a minor without the, uh, print, uh, without the permission from a minor's parent or legal guardian. Uh, we, again, names, addresses, date of birth, uh, these things would have a threat to minors' well-being and safety and would not necessarily be appropriate, um, to, uh, to the meetings if you saw fit. That would be appro, that would be an appropriate restriction. Time allotment is really just referring to our normal practices. Um, usually it's, um, your standard is what, uh, three minutes? Uh, but we do allow people to, you know, finish their thoughts, and there can be grounds for extending that or decreasing that based on the number of speakers, the, how many people are in the room, but you just need to announce, the Chair would need to announce that ahead of time, so it's, uh, consistently applied. Um, again, registration, we would, uh, we would require folks to fill out those little, those little cards ahead of time, identify themselves, um, and that goes hand in hand with, um, if we see far too many speakers for what a reasonable, you know, reasonable meeting would be, the Chair would have discretion to prioritize speakers who have a connection to the county, such as living, being a taxpayer, employed, um, and having those connections, prioritize versus other speakers. But now again, that would only be if there was, you know, if we were looking at either an eight-hour meeting or, you know, some sort of constraints. There, that is discretion to kind of keep that moving. The emphasis here next on is a viewpoint neutrality. Very, very clear, the Board is completely without authority to, uh, to regulate or restrict someone's viewpoints. Uh, you know, good, bad, the ugly, uh, this is a public forum and would be protected from those kinds of, you know, people would be free to express those opinions. But again, there is limited, you know, some ability to make reasonable restrictions on how those views are expressed, um, and how those, based on how those view, how those expressions allow for the meeting to be conducted in an efficient, effective, fair, dignified way, appropriate for the setting. Uh, as far as enforcement goes, the Chair, the presiding, as the presiding officer, is Ch, uh, is, um, responsible for maintaining the conduct of the meeting, conduct of the meeting. So, under the law, the proper appro, the proper approach would be, in most cases, the Chair would issue, uh, first issue a warning, "Excuse me, sir, you're violating our rules, could you stop doing that?" At that point, it would then be appropriate to, the Chair would then, you know, d, prevent or order the person to discontinue their speech, and if they did not yield the floor after that, then the Chair would be within their means to, um, uh, ask for law enforcement assistance, um, to remove that person and, you know, allow the floor to be reopened. Um, it is a class one, a class two misdemeanor, uh, for someone to willfully refuse to, uh, or to willfully disrupt a meeting once they are warned and asked to be, you know, directly be removed by the Chair, so that's kind of the mechanism there. Uh, but this, these kinds of regulations are expressly authorized under, uh, state law, um, and, um, the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is our jurisdiction, has provided a lot of guidance. So ultimately, this policy was in large part, um, based on a London County Schools in Virginia, uh, their public meeting policy. The, they had a case that took, recently went to the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals in December, and that policy was entirely upheld. Uh, so we feel confident that a policy like this would, is within sound legal reasoning. Uh, but if there's any comments or concerns, um, we can adjust it, but otherwise, we would recommend, uh, adoption this evening, so to be ready for the regular, uh, regular meeting in two weeks.
Um, I just have a couple comments and one concern. I thought, I thought I was under the understanding that we wanted something that Steve could read prior to the meeting, very similar to the school board, this seems very long for him to have to read before everyone.
No, 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 this is not for him to read. So what we have to do is, under the law, we are allowed to adopt a public, a policy. So this would be a board policy akin to like your rules of procedure that you have, some, it may be integrated in there at one point, next time we go through that. Based on what we have, what settles here, Steve will get, Commissioner Morris will get a, will work with him to get a statement that says, "We've adopted a public participation policy, we'll make sure copies are available, both online, publicized, and available in the chambers for reference," and we'll provide a brief overview so speakers can be aware of this policy beforehand. But it's important that we establish these standards in very kind of clear, you know, detailed way, so that they are more appropriately enforced after the, after the, so that, that warning can have some meat to it.
Right. And then, the two questions on the legal side, here we discussed this with, um, District Attorney's Office on this, because this is kind of one of those very interpretive items, you know, it's left to interpretation, I mean, I could not be offended by something in, in Blake May or vice versa. And then my second question to that is, who is the charging individual? Is it Chairman Morris, or is it the county? If someone is to so be charged with this misdemeanor for violating this, who, who is the party, like, if we, if I were to say Chairman Morris, could you stop the person from public comment? Am I the responsible party for formally going with the charges, or is that a county thing?
So for the latter question, it, it would be enforced by the Sheriff's Office who attends it. So, the, the Chair's duty is to direct the, is to warn the person, uh, and then eventually, you know, ask that they cease and stop disrupting the meeting. Because once the Chair ends their time, and if they keep talking, they are now willfully disrupting the meeting. So at that point, the deputies would have witnessed a crime and would be, would have, then have the ability to detain or arrest the person as, as appropriate. So, the, it, it's not, the, the Chair nor the Board would be the, indicating the charge, they, it would be, they would simply be allowing the deputies there to enforce, it would trigger the ability for the deputies to, um, enforce the law. One of the things that kind of get tricky in these cases is you've got someone disrupting, you knew, you know, you want them, they need to be removed in order to allow the, the meeting to continue. Um, it's very important that there's a very clear, um, legal basis for, for a deputy to detain or arrest or just simply escort someone out of that room. Um, there have been cases where there is someone being disrupted, but because they didn't have quite a clear policy, how it set it up, um, the deputy, you know, the law enforcement there, you know, the Chair orders you remove this person, and as it turns out, they, um, the dep, the law enforcement didn't actually have sufficient legal grounds to remove the person from the, the grounds, that they didn't go through those steps. And because of that, there was liability. Um, so this policy, and if we follow this policy, if this person is being willfully disruptive after being warned by the Chair, um, we would then have ultimately recourse, the, the officers on the, would be able to take the appropriate action. Um, I haven't consulted with the district attorney, we, this has been a quick turn. Um, this is internal policies Board. I would say to your question about what's offensive, um, nothing in here says, we don't really say anything about offensiveness.
Or not offensive, but...
Vulgarity, obscenities. So those are generally understood terms as far as the law goes. Uh, you know, I, I, I wouldn't dare give you examples. Um, but we're, again, we're not talking about viewpoint, any kind of viewpoint issues here. We're talking, we're not talking about your viewpoints, we're talking about how you express those viewpoints. So, I, I forget the, one of the cases talks about, yeah, you're allowed to go, you know, go there and oppose the death penalty. You can't oppose the death penalty while cussing up a storm and, you know, threatening one of the members. That is the line. And, uh, the point here is, is the policy is designed, the line will be very apparent, uh, I believe, uh, you know, vulgarities and ad hominem personal attacks. We, we've seen what that looks like, and we've, the Commissioners have also seen, you know, being, you know, taking appropriate criticism and, you know, been very supportive of that. So like I said, the, the policy is, is done, and then we'll work with you and the Commit, Commissioner Morris in particular, as the Chair, to make sure that this is implemented in a way that, not only is the policy written right, but it's implemented in a way that is legally sufficient.
Sheriff Schreier, and I know you're here in, in not a totally different capacity, do you mind speaking to us what your thoughts are on this? And from law enforcement side? I just don't want us to get into a, get us into a situation where not enforceable or the district attorney, you know, conflict there.
It, I mean, it is, um, it, it's codified as a Sheriff's duty in, uh, certain public meetings. So we do this at the Board of Education, for example. It comes at the Chair's request, the deputy is to only recognize the, the Chairman's, uh, request to remove the individual, and that just maintains that order of the Board. You, you may suggest it, but the deputy's gonna, gonna wait for the Chair to ask for the removal. Um, I think the best course of action would be, uh, you know, law enforcement officers have discretion in, in judging the severity of, maybe it's crossed the threshold of needing to be removed, but is that, is that, does that suffice to solve the problem? And a charge is not necessary. If the individual goes, "Well, I just lost my temper, I'm very frustrated, the emotions are there," and if they're willing to leave the area, depart the meeting peacefully, and remove themselves from county property, may not result in a, in an arrest. But if it, if it turns into something more, then that deputy's gonna take actions based on the reaction that he or she is getting from the individual. They would do the charging, um, your recording, you know, technically, the Chair or any member would be a witness, but the recording would most likely suffice for a court proceeding as far as whether, whether it was disruptive to the meeting or not, that type of thing. So, I don't really have any issue as far as being able to carry that out, and it is, it is a Sheriff's duty.
And I, I would say is, the emphasis, I would emphasize is, we don't see North Carolina very many prosecutions under the statute, they're very, very rare. Uh, it, what the key though is, is, is if someone is violating this, that gives us the option of, uh, a lawful detain, you know, detainment as appropriate, uh, to remove the per, they remove the person and get them out of that situation, allow them to calm down, allow them to kind of diffuse the situation. Like I said, where people get into trouble is when you don't have that, where you don't, haven't articulated that authority beforehand, and then you, you deal with the situation, but then they come back and say, um, you know, unlawful arrest or something like that. So this makes it very clear where that line is, and make sure that we're all on the same page, and gives good notice to the public.
Okay, other questions or comments? I think that we have been extremely tolerant and very flexible and open with, with all citizens that wish, wish to participate in our meetings and, and speak, and I think in the ten years that I have served on the Board, we have never had an incident where we have ever asked anyone to leave. It's always been very, very well maintained, and I think that this, this is, and, and I expect it to continue that way. Hopefully, the expression of this policy for those individuals that may not be very clear on what is appropriate behavior, we'll, we'll be able to hear this and, and understand that, that there, there are some limitations, and hopefully that will correct the problem in and of itself. But if it does not, it does provide us with some, some, some capability to deal with it. I think that, uh, the, the one part that, that I think is particularly important is the, the, the section about, about comments about minors, and I think the nature of the, of what we deal with is, is quite sensitive in, in many ways. There are child custody, child protective services, uh, just a multitude of, of areas that, uh, where we are doing, I say "we," we by virtue of our human services employees are, are working 24/7 to protect the best interests of children in Cabarrus County is, and, and as well as a lot, a lot of adults that, that need assistance and protection as well. So, so to have the, the, the ability to, to, to protect them and, and not to allow any sensitive, uh, information to, to be released and things of that nature, I think is as important as any, any other piece of this. I think somebody had a question or a comment?
Well, very briefly, you, you have just articulated that very well, so there's not much to add. It, I hope that the, the general public will see this as, as just something that's necessary. Sometimes you just have to have something in place in case something gets sideways, and that we're not in any way trying to stifle free speech or the ability to come before our Board and criticize us for what we do as public officials in the public domain. And, and so, um, anyway, I think this is just a necessary part of, of doing that.
This is very common. Um, we're, this is something that needs to happen, if only for a traffic management standpoint. One day, we're gonna get an opinion, there's gonna be a packed chamber, and this gives us kind of clear grounds on how to keep, you know, manage this effectively.
Well, and I think that one of the, the, the more disturbing parts of, of some experiences that we've had lately is that I think we failed to make the other participants of our meeting, other visitors, to feel safe and comfortable because of some of the activities that was going on. So, so hopefully, we can, uh, correct that situation, so every citizen of the county feels safe and comfortable, uh, attending and participating in our, our meetings. I think that's our responsibility to make sure that, that happens, and to not allow, uh, situations to exist that, that would threaten that. So, any, any other concerns, comments? Uh, let's, I, I'll just throw out one, the, well, the first thing is, is the ad hominem attacks is a term that I suspect most people would not understand. Is there any alternative wording that would be more clear, that we could replace that with? Also, that would be more easy for me to pronounce when I have to read this?
Well, I did, we did give you the, um, uh, two ways to say it, so you could say, personal ad hominem attacks. So, I, add, the reason we, I don't like using kind of terms of art, uh, in these things, uh, but I would say about a third or more than half of this policy is borrowed directly from the Court of Appeals, and that's the language they use. Um, when in doubt, in this kind of circumstance, is use the judge's own words. But I think, um, I would say, I mean, there's different ways to explain that, um, but I'm hoping that personal ad hominem attacks, um, uh, might be appropriate, but if anyone has suggestions, of course.
Well, that's Latin. It means "to the man."
Yeah.
And it means that you're criticizing the person, um, instead of their qualifications or their, um, or something they've said, or something they've done. So that's, that's what it means. It's kind of a term of art in, in legal matters, that's why it was used here, because it has a specific meaning in that way.
Well, I fulfilled my obligation by asking the question. The, the other question that I would ask... The other question that I would ask, let's say that I'm John Doe and, and I come to a commissioner's meeting and, and I express myself in a very loud and forceful manner that, that I feel is appropriate to, to indicate my enthusiasm or seriousness of the matter. And this, this policy or the chairman may interpret that as a threatening or disruptive approach and ask me to stop. So what would be my route of appeal? To whom would I complain that I was unfairly interrupted?
So when it comes to the tone and tenor of one's speech, there is less, you have more discretion as chair to, to monitor that. You have a little bit more ability to exercise your ability as the presiding officer to constrain that. So you, I said that when you look at an ambiguous situation like that, I would encourage the presiding officer to consider how does that tone affect the conduct of the meeting? So if it is, if you think it's interfering with the, the effectiveness and efficiency and dignity of the meeting, then you would be within your grounds to warn the person and ask them to lower, you know, lower the volume of their voice. If they refused, then again, you would have to make a decision of whether that was, it was so disruptive to the conduct of the, of the meeting, that it would be necessary to direct that person to stop speaking. So, you know, unless we have a decibel meter, we're not going to have a precise line on that. But like a lot of different efforts is in the presiding, you know, that you exercise a lot of, as the presiding officer, a lot of discretion on how the meeting is conducted and how you, the timing and how things move along, how the board engages in discussions. So this is just an aspect of your authority as the presiding officer to guide the proper conduct of the meeting.
Right. Well, hopefully, the presentation of this policy, if adopted by the board, will in and of itself help to correct some of these issues that we've experienced recently. Commissioners, other questions?
I make a motion that we suspend the rules of procedure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And so what would be your pleasure on this proposal?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt the public participation policy as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And I will work with our legal staff to come up with a more condensed explanation that we can use on a regular basis. I think probably for this initial pass, it might not be a bad idea to read the entire policy and to get it on, on the record and, and then, then we'll proceed from there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your efforts on that. Okay, we move now to item 4.16. Emory Ortiz from the library has been patiently waiting to present a budget amendment.
So we have active living in parks, we should have active libraries, then I can move up to the top of the agenda. This is very easy, quick. The Concord Friends of the Library have donated $3,000 to allow us to purchase a new seating booth for the teen area in the Concord Library. And this one will be something we can plug into, or the teens can plug into. Right now, the furniture we have in there, we don't have any easy access plugs, so it's just a method of, of getting them something to charge their devices with.
I'm sorry you had to wait so long to, to give us a gift.
It's a nice break with good news, right? It's the happy stuff.
Yeah, any questions for Emory?
I'll give her a chance. So talk briefly about the future Concord Library CIP.
So we're hoping, you know, here in the, the next few years, that we can get the Concord Library fully renovated. Obviously, the, the lack of plugs in a building that old is not just, you know, isolated to the teen area. We have a lot of spaces in that library that could really benefit from a facelift and is heavily utilized as that branch is. We're hoping we can do some, some great work and create some more public space. Part one of that would be getting the admin offices out of the Concord Library and moved to the milestone building. So we've got, got the steps in place to start working on that.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we move to item 4.17. Kevin Grant has also patiently waited through a lot of discussion.
It's all good. Good evening, everyone. I guess Chairman Morris is now guilty. He's got this bottle roundup that he doesn't know what to do with. So this is a good segue, and I had time to think about this. So we prefer that you use the bottle roundup, all for its intended purpose, but if you really, really feel guilty, the county does have the household hazardous waste facility that is open on the first Wednesday and third Saturday of every month. We're one of about 20 counties that actually have permanent household hazardous waste collection facilities. We get a lot of folks from Roan, Roan County who wants to come down and use our facility, but we're not allowed to via permit. So anyways, we have a outside company that helps manage our facility. It's called EcoFlow Incorporated. And what they do is they provide for the two monthly collections. They'll bring, they'll bring down two qualified, certified staff members that come down. So when somebody comes down to drop off paint, pesticides, household cleaners, pool chemicals, et cetera, we collect it from the peoples, basically from their trunks or, you know, the back of their pickup truck or whatever. These folks, what they do is look at what the, the item is. So if it's caustic, acidic, if it's an oxidizer, whatever, they've got specific places to put it so we don't combine it and, and cause an issue. So an issue just like bleach and vinegar, you know, it sounds very minor, but if you put it together, they cause a reaction. So there's a reason why we have it only twice a month, because we do have to have certified people that, you know, what they're doing and, and handle it properly. The other thing that could happen is somebody comes down with a bottle that's unknown. We have no idea what it is. So we do need people that are qualified to at least have an attempt to figure out how to handle this item safely and properly. So what, what EcoFlow also does, so at the end of every collection event, it's all packaged, segregated based on the hazard characteristic. It's labeled, we manifest everything, we put on a truck. What they do is they take it up to Greensboro and it gets properly treated and disposed of based on what it is. Now, it could be recycled or reused, it possibly could be incinerated, it could be neutralized and disposed of, but they try to do the best thing possible with these items, you know, going down from recycling, reusing, all the way to incinerating, neutralizing, and possibly landfilling. So we currently have a three-year agreement with EcoFlow, and we've got two one-year option renewals at our, at our discretion. I'm recommending that we do go ahead with the first one-year renewal. And, and basically, it's because this, this is a company that we've been using for quite a while, very comfortable and confident what they do with our waste, how they dispose of it, making sure it's done properly. They are used primarily for the majority of the folks within North Carolina as well. Mecklenburg does use them. Union County is using them. So they're very reputable. We've got a good relationship with them. When I do go visit the facility up in Greensboro and see how they handle everything, it is done properly. The State Department of Environmental Quality does do regular inspections up there, and they are satisfied with how they're handling it. So that's why I recommend to continue to utilize this company, and that's what we're asking for tonight. Any questions, comments, what to do with your roundup?
So I would guess that counties that do not provide this service probably are having a lot of environmental issue, well, potential environmental issues from inappropriate dumping and contamination of the landfill and...
Yeah, 'cause I mean, the biggest thing that we offer this is to ensure that it does not get put in your trash can, it does not go into a landfill. Now, I guess a landfill is lined and everything else, but it's, it's better than a lot of this material. I mean, let's step back first and say, we prefer that everybody uses up all this material for its intended purpose, but if you truly can't, you bring it to us, at least we are sending it to a facility that it's getting disposed of in the best manner possible.
Okay, so, well, I was just super impressed with the, the information you gave us a month or so ago about the paint that people bring in and the fact that it is being used and people, you know, there's an exchange and...
And, and, and that's twofold, so you're using the paint for its intended purpose, so you are using it up, plus it's also saving us the disposal cost if we do have to send it up with EcoFlow and they have to dispose of it. And then one extra thing, you know, we always talk about the landfill and how that's an enterprise fund, how it's separate, we use fees to, to cover the operations of the landfill. This is general fund money that's used to operate the household hazardous waste facility. So roughly, labor for EcoFlow is approximately $30,000 a year, and the waste disposal, obviously, depends on how much we receive every year, but that's been running anywhere from, say, $70,000 to $90,000 a year. So just, just to show that there is a difference between the two, participation in the household hazardous waste program has gone up by about 1,000 vehicles over the last five years, so more people are using it. We think the cartology app has had a big thing to do with it, more people are aware of it. And I think word of mouth too, that we provide a very efficient operation where folks come in, bring, drop off their stuff, we, you know, most people don't even have to get out of their vehicle, we take care of it, right? It's very efficient.
They did two weeks ago.
Yes. Yeah, Commissioner Honeycomb was there a couple of weeks ago, was one of our slower events that we've had in some time, but we do think we have a very efficient and friendly operation where people feel welcome to bring their material to us.
Any questions for Kevin? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 4.18, and our sheriff's office folks have also been very patient, although we have incorporated them in throughout the meeting, so.
It's been a good aerobic exercise, I think.
Right.
And I guess the first item there is the acceptance of the UAWC or Urban Areas Security Initiative. Last year, actually, we went with, I have to give a lot of credit to our emergency manager, direct, emergency management director, Steve really was critical in getting us to the meeting, getting us included in that, and we were able to receive, or will be able to receive $50,000 in grant money to go towards the next item, which is the explosive ordinance robot. So while it doesn't cover the entire cost by any stretch, it was our share of those funds that are split up between the bomb squads in the UAWC. The UAWC is made up of nine counties, but only, only those bomb squads, sometimes money is earmarked just for law enforcement and what we're doing towards homeland security. So that would be what that item is, is just accepting that $50,000 in funding. The, the next item is the sole source purchase of the, the robot. The reason it's a sole source is because it is part of a company called Remote Tech, and this goes back to the standardization of all bomb squads across the state. All of the bomb squads utilize Remote Tech as the manufacturer of robots. And that's what, that way, if we, for example, got a request from Guilford County, which is the next northern closest bomb squad, instead of having to load our equipment up, we would send techs to them, but the techs know how to use their robot and how to use their containment. All the equipment is similar, so it would be a sole source purchase as it relates to that, that robot as, as opposed to a competitive bid. And the final item is the approval of out-of-county daily inmate charge, which y'all may, are aware of on occasion, and here lately, it seems like more frequently, we get requests from other sheriff's offices to keep inmates in our county jail for them. Each time that we do this, we, we've brought before you a contract, if you will, and it may have a different rate, it may be with a, a different sheriff's office. And what we've seen across the board in North Carolina is more of a standardization of that rate so that the, the sheriff's office looking to outsource those inmates because of a number of issues. And I'll give you some. We kept 40 inmates for Union County because they had a major plumbing problem that they had to shut down their showers. So they sent us 40 inmates. They were billed per each inmate per day and, and then reimbursed Cabarrus County the, the money for that. So what we're proposing is so that we can more freely negotiate with those folks. There's not a lot of negotiation because this is fairly standard, is an inmate rate of $70 per inmate per day. So for example, right now, we're housing, I think, 10 females for Stanley County. So Stanley is paying us that $700 a day for every day that we keep those inmates. It's, it's a cost reduction move that sheriff's offices do. This comes up a lot when there's overcrowding in one jail and they're trying to get a new jail built, but they're under an order to reduce their inmate population, so they, they farm those particular folks out. We get a choice in who we get, so we tend to, don't send us the sick ones, the mean ones, the, the, the hard-to-get-along ones, and, but they also know we can send them back. So it, again, it's a way to generate revenue. We don't have to, what we look at is how many, we look at our staffing and what our bed availability is, and so we're producing this revenue at no additional personnel cost. Does that make sense? Because I think I've told y'all before, whether there's 200 in there or 300, you have to have the same number of personnel. So if we've got a 100-person gap in those beds, we can house 50 to 75 inmates from another county very easily. And we try to do that because we are one of the bigger detention facilities in the state with the size that we have. So we would, we would simply ask that, an approval of a, a standard charge, it would be a baseline charge, I think is the way it's worded, because there may be some extenuating circumstances where we may charge more, to be honest with you, because we don't want a jail sending, because they're, they're holding federal inmates and getting paid $120 a day and they're told to diminish their population, they don't, they don't, they send us their regular inmates and keep the federal inmates and keep collecting $120. And that's not fair to Cabarrus County, and so we, we would answer back with $120 a day. But 70 would be the most common that, that we see. We've kept inmates from literally all over the state. This would just give us a mechanism to not have to come to you every time on the rate that we're doing or agreeing to, if that makes sense.
Okay, questions on any one of those three items?
Not a question, but I did want to jump back just as we're gonna have to make a revision to the motion on 4.18. So it'll be motion to accept the grant award and the associated budget amendment, and so we'll get a budget amendment prepared and on there for the regular meeting, and it will be to appropriate the $50,000 of revenue, along with the $50,000 of expense that goes with it, plus the additional money needed for the robot will come from fund balance. And so we'll make that change.
Okay, and that will be on our consent agenda for next meeting. Okay, any other...
If we could get a demonstration of the robot?
If we could get a demonstration of the robot?
Absolutely, absolutely. We do that quite often. We, for example, leadership Cabarrus, we, every year that we do that, one of the demonstrations is the bomb squad and those types of things, but we'll, we'll, in Capo U, we're doing it in the morning, as a matter of fact. So, there'll be a demonstration of our old robot in the morning while it's still working.
And so, the old robe, when you get the new robot, the old robot goes on gov deals?
Potentially. They're, it, it, it's a little harder to sell that on gov deals, a lot of times it goes agency to agency, but because we're staying with the same manufacturer, a lot of the parts are interchangeable. So, to be honest with you, it will most likely be a parts unit that we'll keep so that if we're not having to buy parts if something breaks.
Well, that's pretty amazing, a 20, 20-year-old item that...
There's a lot of them that are, the, the same part that they were originally...
That doesn't happen.
Not very often.
Nowadays.
Okay, any other questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and we move now to the approval of the regular meeting agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. We need to add to that to include presentation of the annual budget. I think that was not on there, so we'll need to add that item. Does anyone see any other changes that need to be made? Okay, then I would entertain a motion that we approve the regular meeting agenda, including the presentation of the annual budget, and schedule any necessary public hearings.
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have need of a...
One more. Oh, no, you're good. Close session.
Of a brief closed session tonight. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation in economic development as well as acquisition of real property as authorized by North Line General Statute 143-318, A3, 4, and 5. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are now in closed session, and we thank all those that have joined us online tonight.
We got, we got just about everything that comes in and content. They're content right in here just like they would be on a farm. I mean, you know, they got water, they got everything, they got all the grass they want to eat and weeds, and, you know, got a pretty nice shelter that we built for them, and they seem to not really want to get out, but if you leave the gate open, they will go, and they're hard to catch. I don't really know what they enjoy to eat the best, you know, haven't talked to them too often, but, you know.